Hello, good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. This is a meeting of Citrus County, August 22, 2023, 5:01. And it's the Board of County Commissioners to conduct a public hearing on application CPA/AA/PUD-22-13, Clark Stillwell, for Sunshine RV/Fish Creek Campground. Herein referred to as applicant. I'm going to read a bit of things, and y'all know this, but we need to do some housekeeping. It's very important that, because we have both sides of the aisle represented and emotions are high, I am going to give warnings if you're out of line. And out of line is cross-talking, that's disturbing your neighbor. Clapping, that can be used as intimidation, believe it or not. And any kind of insults being thrown to your neighbor or to the board, I will give warnings. The bailiff is not in here.[95.28][95.28](Laughter) So let it rip right now while he's not in here. But the bailiff will be in here. And just please remember that we're all neighbors. And I would like to not hear that I have made up my mind because I have not made up my mind. I think it's very important to listen to both sides. We are essentially the judge and the jury up here. So I will show you respect. These commissioners will show you respect. Happens to be my first meeting back, so bear with me if I make a mistake. So this is a long day, and I am thankful that you have taken the time to be here. So, that being said, I'm polite, but I am not nice, so just remember that. Yes, ma'am? Yes. Oh, and I will have to call recesses because it takes medicine. So there will be a couple recesses, which isn't of the norm, but we have to do that. Doctor's orders. So to make all of you aware, this is the formal parties in the proceeding are Sunshine RV/Fish Creek Campground, represented by Clark Stillwell and Citrus County, which will present a staff presentation. A formal party to the proceeding, in accordance with the law, as in a matter of procedural due process, has the right to cross-examine witnesses, present evidence, and demand that witnesses testify under oath. And although the public is not a formal party to the proceeding, the public does have a right to be heard. So if you are able, and the overflow room can hear me, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So when it comes time for the open to the public, if you're able and you're in this room, please speak and maybe swap places with someone in the overflow room, so that everybody has a chance. To ensure that everything runs smoothly, I find it important to quickly go over the procedures, which I did on how to be polite. But first, the applicant will proceed with it, present its application. Then county staff will make its presentation. After that, the commission will open this meeting to the public. Once the public portion is closed, the applicant will have an opportunity to make a brief rebuttal. And I will open it up to the commission for discussion and action. And once you've spoken, you don't get a chance to speak again, so please be aware of that. So make sure you get everything that you want to say. I will be firm on the time that you get to speak. So if you find that somebody, you've heard the same thing 10,000, 15,000 times, you don't have to repeat that. We will hear that. We make notes. So just that will help you with your time, so you can get your side of the story across to us. If any person decides to appeal any decision made by the commission with respect to any matter considered at this hearing, he or she will need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceeding is made, which records include testimony and evidence upon the appeal is to be based. During the public portion of this hearing, proponents and opponents' comments will be limited to three minutes for individuals and five minutes for an organization. The organization needs, if you're representing an organization, the file, the letter needs to be on file with the clerk, and she will let us know. When anyone wishes to speak, comes to the podium, they must print, they must say their name, address, and number of the applicant for which they are speaking. If representing an organization, a letter has to be authorized for the speaker. After signing in, filling out a green card, and Amy, were you able to hand some green cards out? So please turn that in to Ms. Amy, our deputy clerk. And then when you come up, state your name and where you live. Comments for the public and parties need to be limited to the subject and issued before this commission today, and you all are here for that. When anyone comes up to speak, we expect everyone to conduct themselves in the manner fitting this professional setting. And again, personal attacks will not be tolerated from anybody. And I will make sure that Commissioner Bays doesn't do any personal attacks to any of you all out there.[395.42][395.42](Laughter) She does bite. Okay, so this may be a long proceeding, and as such, the commission may at its own discretion take recesses as needed, as needed, and I said that. I think it'll be great for the crowd too, because we do have restrooms outside, and I'm sure it's going to be a long night. Every person from the public wishing to speak today, and any witnesses may speak today, will be placed under oath, and as stated before, you are subject to... They're not subject to cross-examining.
May.
May.
Maybe.
May is the legal word. Next, the commission will need to formally adopt backup materials into evidence. So we are at that stage of this proceeding right now? So commissioners, we need to adopt... Where are we? We need to make a motion second and vote, and there will be no public comment on this part of the procedures. So I'm looking for a motion to adopt backup materials into evidence.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bays and a second by Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Right now, we have 4-0. Where is Commissioner Bays, Davis?
Just say aye.
We're formally adopting the backup material and evidence into the record. How do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Prior to the proceeding, I'm going to defer to the county attorney's office for ex parte communication and then take care of procedural matters. Madam Attorney.
With, commissioners, with regard to the application, before you, have you had any ex parte communications you need to disclose for the record? And we'll start with Commissioner Finnegan.
No, ma'am.
No.
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 Okay.
Madam Chair, I don't know if any of the lawyers here have any housekeeping matters they want to discuss.
Mr. Stillwell?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Clark Stillwell. On behalf of the applicant, I have one procedural matter to address. The Planning and Development Committee, and I'm not sure if it's included in your backup, but it was submitted, are two videos that my client showed. One is the site itself, and then the other deals with the access issue. Point is, I've been advised that this board doesn't view videos in its public hearing process, so we need to formally request that you watch those videos. They're not long, but they were shown to the PDC. You brought them, right, Joanna?
Board, what is your pleasure? Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. I would like to see the videos, if there's evidence.
I would like to see the videos.
It's part of their application.
Okay, got a consensus. And then would we want to do the videos during the applicant's presentation? Joanna?
Yeah, they are.
They are part of his application, so I think that should be.
Very good.
I know Mr. Brooks is... I don't know whether he has anything for the record.
Mr. Brooks?
Brooks, I'm sorry.
Brooks, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ralph Brooks, attorney, and I represent Protect Ozella Waters, Inc., and I'll be speaking as an organizational, five minutes when we come up for public comment. There'll be members of the public that have different things that they'll bring in and show you, and I'll explain to you why some of those can be considered competent substantial evidence for the legislative plan amendment and for the quasi-trudicial resoning.
Sir, are you saying Brooks with an R or Brooks with a B?
It's B-R-O-O-K-E-S. And Ralph is spelled unusual, it's an R-A-L-F.
Thank you. And would you like to go first when we open to the public, or do you have?
If I could, yes, as a brief introduction for all the speakers.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay. Madam Attorney?
Does Mr. Stillwell have any objection to them, him going first?
Not at all.
Staff have any objection to him going first?
No. Very good. So at this time, we will now proceed with the hearing. The applicant presentation, there is no time limit for the applicant to present its presentation.
Reminded me of that. Commissioners, at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider two ordinances. The first ordinance is an Atlas Amendment Ordinance, an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Land Use Atlas Map by redesignating approximately 16.1 acres from the Planned Residential Development District with mobile homes allowed, and the Coastal and Lakes Residential District with mobile homes allowed, to the Recreational Vehicle Park Campground District with a master plan for an RV park and camp sites, providing for conflicts, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearings, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. And also, a comprehensive plan amendment ordinance, an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Future Land Use Map by redesignating approximately 16.1 acres from the Low Intensity Coastal and Lakes District to the Recreational Vehicle Park Campground District with a master plan for an RV park with camping sites, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearings, and providing for an effective date. We have the PowerPoint and the movies, whatever you want first.
All right.
I think they're ready for you.
I'm just choking, just go on, please.[823.22][823.22](Laughter) I'll be okay.
For the record, my name is Clark A. Stillwell. My professional address is 320 Highway 41, the Brandon Bank Building here in Evans, Florida. I represent the applicant. That written authorization is on file. We talked about preliminary matters. What we're doing here tonight is a three-part application. First, we're amending the county's comprehensive land use plan, generalized future land use map from coastal lakes to RVP. The second is we are amending the LDC Atlas Map to an RVP classification. And the third is we are adopting a PUD master site plan with conditions as per the county's Land Development Code for RV parks. And the code requires all RV parks to go through that PUD process. The, basically, I'm going to break down my presentation into facts surrounding the site, concurrency discussion, plan consistency discussion, and compatibilities. Then we'll address issues raised at the public hearing and the PDC matters. I am not going to address one by one each of the letters that you received. I have no intention of doing that, but I try to categorize those into the four or five major issues, and I will speak to those along with the team that we have, myself. We have the engineer for the project. The clients are here. And we have, and the engineer will address issues of stormwater, wastewater, and the master site plan. To begin, the site is currently, as indicated, 16.1 acres, and it has four alternate key numbers. Okay, now, four alternate key numbers is significant in our discussion of net impacts here. Each alternate key number represents the opportunity for one single-family residential house, and I'll speak to that a little bit. So let's just go to a little bit of history, then we're going to look at these two videos, then we'll do part of the PowerPoint, and then we'll get into the real meat of the discussion. Basic fact of the matter is, in 1975, Ronnie Green's Fish Camp Boat Ramp and Basin was created on this site. And that's in the PowerPoint in the back part. Mr. Green then proceeded to subdivide the real estate around his boat ramp basin and fish camp, and that is reflected by the name on the unrecorded subdivision. In 1984, there was a special exception granted under the 84 code. Staff report indicates 50 RV sites and five tent sites in 1984. In 1990, when you adopted your comprehensive land use plan, per your mapping policies, in effect at a time, at that time, that's what is Appendix D to the plan at that time, the site was designated coastal lakes, as was every other piece of real estate over there on the west side of the county, which was not in public lands. And then in 1990, it received the current PDR designation on it for the existing special exception. When that occurred, there was no objection to that process by anyone, to include the owners. The, as you're well aware, the park at that time included a boat ramp. It was a private boat ramp, and still is a private boat ramp. The park has since closed, and has been closed for a number of years. The boat ramp has been, was open to the public, and for lack of a better term, an ad hoc basis. Just people came and went there and used it. When the client acquired this site a few years ago, it became a private club, and access to the boat ramp is now through that private club. If you've been out there, you've seen the gate and the code key to get in. In January of 2022, the applicant had its first pre-acquise Citrus County. So let's go to the PowerPoint to start here. Given my known history for propensity with technology, I'm going to disclaim any... I didn't touch it.[1179.14][1179.14](Laughter)
We're there. There's the second slide right there.
All right. This is an area of the site. As you can see, the 16 acres in the boat ramp is identified. There is the number of single-family residents to the east, and then the area a little further to the east and to the south.
I do not have a pointer here, no.
Is this going to work?
I think you have one, yeah.
Where do I point it at, Joanna?
There you go, and it's...
Okay, there's the site, right there. Boat ramp, the access road in, and the single-family residence, which consists of multi-mobile homes and site-built homes there, the piece to the east, and then this area to the east. The area to the, generally to the south, which consists of an undeveloped lot of record right there. This area here in the boat ramp is the four, all keys to represent the 16 acres. Let's go to the next one, please, Joanna. This is a site of the existing building on there that was part of the original history of the project. Let's go to the next one, Joanna. This is a survey. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it, but it's one of those things you file with an application, identifying the property boundaries. Next one, Joanna, this is your G Flume as it exists, the green. The green is coastal lakes. The other area is conservation, part of the Crystal River Preserve owned by the state of Florida. The significance of this particular drawing is the conservation areas represent greater than 50% of the abutting property. There's no, nothing there but vacant land. Next one, please, Joanna. This is your LDC Atlas. Again, you can see the conservation areas. The yellowish area is your PDR MH designation that's been there since the 1990s. And then you see what I'm going to call the grayish areas to the east and south are Coastal and Lakes Residential. And you can see the various lots of record. They are not platted, they're unrecorded, some divided lots. And all of those are designated for mobile home use and single-family use. Let's go to the next one. This is some vegetative analysis that shows the generally upland areas in the wetland areas. Next one, Joanna, is your floodplain map, which is what we file consistently. And you can see the floodplain elevation here is 13. We'll discuss that later. And then the next one is a wetlands map. As you'll note from the county staff report, wetlands avoidance has been achieved per comprehensive land use plan, and total wetland impacts are limited to a very small area. I will point out to you that the video that we're fixing to watch next identifies the site has impacted from the prior development, and those impacts still remain, and they will be cleaned up. I would note that as to the conservation areas, if you go back, Joanna, please, to the LDC Atlas map. Thank you. The conservation areas in this particular case are separated by West Bear Creek Road, a 50-foot right away. In the Coastal and Lakes Residential area, there are nine residential lots located along Fish Creek Point Road, two of which, several of which are mobile homes, and two of which are single-family residential. All right, let's now, can we show the videos, please? This video is just of a typical RV that would be going to this project down Ozella Road. At the PDC and within your packets are a number of letters concerning traffic. We're going to address traffic in detail later, but the purpose of this is to basically show that this typical RV can make it down Ozella Road to this site without issue. I would point out that Ozella Road is not weight-restricted by the county engineering's office, that within your backup material, there's a small bridge that people have to go over to access this particular site. There's an engineer's report in there that indicates that bridge is safe and can withstand these type of vehicles. And the engineering comments did not raise issues relative to that small bridge. Okay, there we go. It's pulling into what is now the boat ramp area, an area that is substantially scarified This is the exit point back onto Ozella Trail. Commissioners, you watched it driving out. I don't know that you want to watch it driving back. We can short this one. Let's go to the next one, Joanna, if you would. This is a promo video of the project when it developed. We're not going to show it to you. What I want to show you is a video of the site that was done with a drone, and it shows the existing site and the impacts of fires developed. So we're going to get there.
Not this one. So you went to one that says trash? The purpose of this video is to show the remaining infrastructure left over from the 1980s RV park. Here's one of two trailers still on site, buried deep in the woods, both of which will be removed during development. Here's the old sewer treatment plant, which will be removed and replaced by an approved septic system. And here's the second trailer buried deeper into the woods. There's an electric hookup for one of the 150 spots that were approved. Here are two... Here are two concrete slabs where old park models used to sit. More electrical infrastructure. A dilapidated shed. More electrical infrastructure. One example of the water spigot and sewer connections.
Yeah, let's go back to the power report now, Joanna. Okay, would you go to the abutter map, which, keep going? Thank you. One more. There it is. This is a land use abutter map. It's one of those things that's required to be filed. Following up my comments, you can see the trustee of improvements land generally located to the north and west are labeled vacant. You can see the existing single-family house has developed and undeveloped along Fish Camp Road to the, generally to the east and south. The vacant, what I'm going to call island or area across, and then the vacant, single-family lot to the south. Okay, let's go, if you would, Joanna, to the next one, or the next discussion about the site plan. The original site plan we filed in this particular project called for 37 RV sites, 23 clamping sites, and five primitive sites. For those of you that don't know what a clamping site is, we're going to pitch us of them, but it's basically a deck with electrical water and a tent-type structure. The primitive sites are no more than a grassy spot that has been cleared of trees where you put your tent down and has an electrical hookup. The original site plan called for these clamping sites out on the island. The island is area, if you will, is, as per your staff report, authorized for one single-family residential use out there. There's an existing slab out there. After the PDC hearing and after meeting with the county staff and looking at the county staff report, the applicant has revised its site plan and it currently proposes 32 RV sites, 16 clamping sites, and 20 primitive sites. That's a decrease of 16% in RVs. And the clamping sites are decreased by 44%. So if we can go to the site plans, I'll try and walk you through those changes. This was the original site plan. As you can see, out on the island, there were lots designated, okay? And then the location of the other clamping and RV sites within the project. Now, what we've done here is we've internalized the RV sites with the revised site plan and put the clamping sites on the outside. So let's go to the next slide, Joanna. If you have any detailed questions about that, the engineer is here and he'd be glad to answer them. He's going to follow me. Next one, please. Next one. All right, so here we've got, now go back, please, Joanna. Here, we've changed it around and we've got, now, no, one more, Joanna, I'm sorry. Another one. Keep going forward.
No, forward, okay, I misunderstood.
One more, one more. There we go. This is the revised site plan. It has, let's just go to the island, has five primitive sites out there. It has canoe-launch proposal site. What we changed with this is there was a tiki hut and a kayak storage rack, both of which have been either removed or redirected away. The island dock deck area is limited strictly to kayak and canoe launch. The existing slab on the island area, it will remain. It will be, have a small roof over it. And there'll be no other structures that, there were structures preferred, proposed in the original site plan. And again, five permitting sites out there. We increased the buffer along South Fish, South Fish Creek Camp Road as per this county staff report, and we installed the fence. The green space and open space on this particular revised site plan has been increased and defined, and it meets the current LDC standards. The ISR ratio on this particular project is .21, well below the LDC-allowed ISR. I would point out to you that, per the code, we could have a density of 10 units per acre, which would be 160 units. And the proposed density is 4.2 units, well below that. So, and the recreation area has been defined clearly and meets the 10% standard of the Land Development Code and the revised site plan. We also have clarified the setback off the wetlands of 25 feet, which is to code. And we've clarified that any of the structures, the clamping sites that abut those wetlands will be set back 35 feet to code. Again, the engineer here is here to discuss site plan details if they arise, but per your staff report in the PDU section of it, this particular applicant meets the LDC PUD standards for an RV park. All right, so there are three, what I call three Cs in land use: concurrency, compatibility, inconsistency. And that's what we're going to talk about next. Concurrent, the site is served by central water. One of the concurrency elements is landfill capacity. There is a letter on file from the county indicating landfill capacity exists. One of the final concurrency issues that remain in Citrus County is drainage. You have the professional engineer's report that defines the drainage onsite in that it meets not only the plan test, but the Land Development Code and the Southwest Florida Water Management. Traffic, there is no traffic concurrency, but it's come up multiple times. And I'll discuss that at a later date. Okay, which leads us to the sewer plant issue. And that has been one of the topics that you'll find consistently throughout letters to the board. Now, Joanna, let's move on, if you will, to the definition of a central sewer system. We got to thank you. This is right out of your comprehensive land use plan. It indicates that a central sewer system has to serve more than two people or capability to serve more than two people, and it has an operator. That's, in this particular case, we serve four different all keys. And as per the proposal, we have an operator onsite. Now, the staff report indicates the change in jurisdiction between the Department of Health and FDEP. Anything over 5,000 gallons is now within the framework of FDEP's regulations and oversight. But FDEP, through an inter-local agreement, has passed back the authority to regulate that and supervise it with the Department of Health. This particular plant would require 6,800 gallons of wastewater for this central sewer facility. Now, that is based on your county code and 100 GPD per RV site. To put that in context, okay? If you were to develop this site, and just to go back and regress a minute. At the PDC, one of the questions that was raised by the board itself was what can you do with this project if you didn't have an RV park? The project is coastal lakes, we know that. We know that it is PDR, but the PDR has expired. And as what Ms. Katu explained to the PDC is, you would abandon the PDR designation. Now, the applicant has four all-key numbers in this application. The applicant owns an additional all-key number abutting this particular piece of property. That's not in the application, that is coastal lakes. I point this out because each one of those alternate key numbers, each one is a lot of record, and each one could be developed for a single-family residential use. Now, a single-family residential use, the question is how much wastewater do they generate? And I went back and I checked out the public records, and I found that the most recent septic tank permit issued in Ozella was on May 9th of 2023, permit number 2467371. It's on two lots. Each was about a half acre, total 1.1 acres. But the significance of it is it's 1,850 square foot house, not a McMansion, a comfortable house for that particular owner. The septic tank on that site, to me, code 1,020 gallons. So if we can do five single-family lots, that would be 5,000 gallons of wastewater on this site compared to 6,800. The five lots that potentially could exist there doesn't have an operator and doesn't have, what I'm going to call, the control that exists over it. Now, under FDEP regulations in the Department of Health, that operator has to be licensed and trained, we know that. Also, he has to be onsite and he expects once a year. Now, to address this situation, the applicant proposes the following conditions, which I think will help address the issues raised by the public. A, a licensed operator at all times. The annual reports and inspections would be increased to a total of four times a year. Now, this number is my number. If you want to make it once a month, you certainly have that authority. Or if you want to make it bimonthly, I'm just saying quarterly would be appropriate. The current mounding system would be built to a 25-year flood elevation. Now, that is consistent with what you do with your central sewer projects on the west coast of Florida. The west coast of Florida, CHAS, Homosassa, both sides of the river, and Crystal River, both sides of the river, that wastewater treatment collection system goes to a 25-year flood system. On site, this particular project would do that. But the mound itself, we would propose to elevate in the tank to the elevation of the 93 storm event or the 100-year flood. Now, the 93 storm event was higher than the 100-year flood. So if you elect to impose this condition and you put that there, then it's going to provide that additional protection. There's a lot of discussion in these letters that this tank is going to overflow and it's going to cause an ecological disaster. A, that's a conclusion, and B, it's not what I would call competent substantial evidence. But the engineer's here to testify and to tell you about the construction standards of the system and how it is in best. Additional condition you would consider in traditional is best management practices and nitrogen-reducing measures. What you have here is this situation is you have a controlled environment, which you have some control over, and the Department of Health does, about the operation of this system. Whereas if you go to a single-family residential house, you built it, you permitted it, it's never inspected. And the last time it's ever addressed is when the drain field backs up or it fails. And that's just a basic fact. Okay, we're going to switch from concurrency to compatibility and plan consistency. Joanna, you want to go to, if you would, in the PowerPoint, three pages down. We'll go back to the next two pages. There you go. Thank you. One of the very first issues we addressed, both with the county staff and the letters that came in in opposition, was the idea of an RV park in the Coastal Lakes area. And the Coastal Lakes, in the plan, in some form or fashion, prohibited these type of developments in this area. First, you need to understand that an RV park, when you look at it as far as land use intensity, and I'm talking about traffic, wastewater, water demand, ISR, all of those intensity tests that we always look at. An RV park is one of the less intensive commercial-type uses that you can have, particularly when you compare it to GNC, but even more importantly, when you compare it to Coastal Lakes Commercial and what you can do there. Coastal Lakes Commercial, you can do a 5,000-foot strip center, much more intense than an RV park. But this issue has been addressed, both within your plan and within the court system. Policy 176.12 specifically addresses and allows for RV parks in the Coastal Lakes area. This issue came up in 2010 in an RV park on Homosassa called Catherine's Bay. So let's go back, Joanna, if you would, one more. This is direct quotes from Catherine's Bay versus Citrus County. It came out of the First District Court of Appeals. What happened in this particular case? I had the joy of going through the whole thing. Is we filed an application and we were approved by the Board of County Commissioners. The abutter, Dr. Fagan, local dentist, challenged it on planned consistency issues. And we had an evidentiary hearing with a hearing officer from the Division of Administrative Hearings, DOWA. The hearing officer ruled against us. So that then decision then went to the governor and cabinet to be codified, okay? And the discussion before the governor and cabinet is one of the rare instances where the governor and cabinet looked at the hearing officer's opinion, and they were prepared not to accept it until their attorney got up and told them to accept it. They had no choice. So from there, we went to the First District Court of Appeals. And the First District Court of Appeals, which is one court below the Supreme Court, made these rulings. So they basically said, when we're looking at the plan conditions, this condition that we've cited here, 17612, which is site-specific, two RVs in the coastal area controlled over the generalized plan policies that said, you know, less intense development in the coastal area. And so we prevailed on that point. The court then went further and discussed competent substantial evidence and how it applied to this particular application. Next one, please. All right. And then this is what the court said about the RV park in this particular area, in the coastal areas of Citrus County. And the court cited the case called Conceica versus City of Sarasota, a very known, well-used land use case. Two things, Conceica says to the public, A, you can't presume a violation of law. So if someone gets up here and says they're going to violate this or that, Conceica says that's not competent substantial evidence, you cannot consider it as such. And then it says, basically, you can't consider primarily the statements of other residents. They just, they don't prefer this land use. And Dr. Fagan testified that it was going to decrease the value of his house. Interestingly enough, in this case, and I'm going to deviate because it's a bit funny on Dr. Fagan's part, but he also said that this RV park would impair his rights for hurricane evacuation. And then I asked him on cross-examination if he ever evacuated when he got notice, and he said no. So that is that fundamental issue. Can you have an RV park within the framework of your comprehensive land use plan? The answer is yes, if it meets plan consistency, if it meets the LDC standards. if it meets the LDC standards, and it meets the PUD standards. All right, compatibility, you know this term. It's been around since 1986. To paraphrase it, what it means is the inability of two land uses over the long term to coexist, or the ability to coexist, however you want to look at it, without doing undue harm to the either other use. As you can see, Catherine's Bay spoke to this issue about compatibility. Okay? But beyond Catherine's Bay, Citrus County has a long history of RV parks on the west side of the county in relationship to what I'm going to call traditional single-family housing and residential neighborhoods. In CHAZ, Zawiski, you have two RV parks, one of which you apparently own. Okay? But it's run by the county. That abuts residential areas. Also, in CHAZ area, you have an existing RV park, mixed-use with mobile homes, that is adjacent to single-family residential areas. That owner came in front of this board to expand that park by adding a higher-intensity commercial use. And this board found that that RV park and that higher-intensity use with offside across-the-street parking was appropriate and approved that application. Those parks have existed there in CHAZ for a long time. No history of major code enforcement. Okay? So again, they meet that test. They've historically met that test. In the Homosassa, you have three large RV parks. Many, at least three, if not more, smaller RV parks. All of them abut waterfront residential properties. Significantly valued waterfront properties. Woods and Waters is one example. It has 100 units, has one access point. That one access point is through a local road, very similar to what you saw on the video. The Woods and Water application came in front of this board, I want to say 18 months ago, to codify its master site plan, which had never been approved by the board. And they were getting hit with that you can't do that because it's not in your master site plan. It was simple matters of it putting in a new concrete pad. So we came before this board to codify that RV park. There was notice given to all the abutting property owners. And in that hearing, you approved that 105-unit RV park, that revised master site plan. There was one issue that came up, and only one issue. It was about parking on the local road that abutted the RV park, and it was quickly addressed. There was no objection to the RV park from the abutters. And that is the type of situation where these type of uses, because RV parks are low-intensive uses, can coexist with single-family residential areas. Crystal River, you have the same situation. You have one large RV park on State Road 44. It abuts some of the most expensive single-family residential houses in Citrus County. No history of incompatibility. Beyond that, in our PowerPoint presentation I will show you, we have documented a large number, over 70 existing RVs situated on residential lots. No problem with them being there, they're authorized uses. But the fact that you have that many RVs there, and again, no history of those RVs being an issue as far as traffic and/or land use compatibility. Joanna, let's, I know I'm driving you crazy, but let's skip to the last two points of the PowerPoint. Last two pages, please.
I don't know which ones your last two pages are. Just stop me when you're ready.
Keep going, keep going, keep going. You're doing wonderful, keep going. You can get a career with this, Joanna, you know. Keep going. All right. We're going to present testimony on how we got to this point and what this map represents. But as you can see, we went out there and we found 74 RVs onsite, and they're documented on this map. My client will testify as to how he did it. It's based on personal knowledge. Okay? But beyond that, you can see that there are 36 short-term vacation residences in the Ozella area. Now, that's significant because if you look at the letters that have been presented, you would think that this was all a traditional, single-family area, and there was nothing else there. Now, we know that there are restaurants there in that area, and there are limited commercial uses there in that area that have coexisted in Ozella without issue. But the significance of the 36 residential units indicates that it's, all of those are not single-family homes. And just so you know, of the 36 vacation homes, only 50% have licenses.
Commissioner Davis.
The 36 short-term vacation rentals, those are stick-built or normal homes, or are they RVs?
They're all side-built.
Side-built, okay.
Yeah. They could be a mobile home, it could be a single-family residence.
But they're not, but they're not RVs?
They're not RVs.
Thank you.
Within the framework of your backup materials, this is a memorandum from my office to Joanna about the Ozella area. And we dug in to the database out there, and we found that there are approximately somewhere between 750 and 800 platted lots of record in Ozella proper, once you get off of US 19. So that's 800 lots of record, that's 800 potential homes. So then we went further and we asked how many of those are developed? And it's basically about 60%. So then we went a little further, and we said, how many of those have homestead on them? And of that figure, it's 60%. So when you bring it back down, okay, you have a significant number of vacant lots. You have a significant number of improved properties that are not homesteaded, which means, A, they're either rentals, or they're weekend homes. And then the number of actual homesteaded properties is a minority, is a minority when you get to the number of total lots. And that's significant because commissioners, you know this is not a popularity contest. This is not how many people are in favor of it, how many people are opposed to it. It is based upon the comprehensive plan and whether we met our burden of consistency and compatibility. All right.
Madam Chair. Ms. Finnegan.
It says that there's 74 RVs. Some properties have multiple RVs. Are those just RVs that's parked at someone's property? Like it's the homeowner and they may travel elsewhere? Are these RVs that people are actually living in, or are they at RV parks?
Well, they're not RV parks. Okay? And whether or not people are living in them, we didn't delve that far. What we wanted to show to you for a couple of reasons is the ideas of RVs out there in the Ozella area, you know, you're talking about 10% of the homes have an RV on them, which is fine, okay? But they have to get in and out. And one of the issues raised was these RVs are going to be a problem getting in and out the 32 RV sites. So here you got 74 that have managed to get in and out on a regular basis. And that's why we showed that. It's not, the area's not deed restricted. Okay, you know, it's not citrus hills. And I throw that just out there because, you know, the context I'm trying to put this in. So the people have their homes, they have their cars, they have their RVs. RVs are common out there, they use the roads out there. There's been no issues. We presented in the traffic data the number of accidents out there. And they're all like speeding accidents and that sort of thing. There's no real indication of any problem with accidents and RVs. And that's in your backup material. Okay, you have the staff report in hand. It's entitled "The Gray Way," but I skipped a page. You want to go back, Joanna, to... Keep going, you're doing great. One more. All right, we talked about plan consistency and we talked about compatibility. This particular policy is out of the conservation element. And it is a modification that was mandated by the state legislature. And the modified Objective 4.5 of the Conservation, Coastal Lakes and River Management Element. And what that particular modification did is it added the highlighted area, recreational and working waterfront, including water-dependent, water-related land uses, shall receive a priority. That's a mandate. That's not discretionary, that's a mandate. Why did the legislature do that? Because the old priority was, under five, was water-dependent, water-related, non-related issues. People were coming in, water-related properties, they wanted to do RV parks, recreational uses, public parks, marinas. And they were getting opposition from the abutters. Basically, don't want it, don't like it, hurt our property values, et cetera. So the legislature said, look, this is important to the public of the state of Florida that they have access to water. And so they changed this particular segment of Chapter 163 and Rule 9J5. This board unanimously adopted this policy without objection from anyone. So what does it mean? It basically says, if we're going to have access to water in Citrus County, you have to plan for it, and where it's appropriate, it's mandated. And this was passed, knowing the legislature passed this, and you passed it, knowing that there was another sector over here about compatibility. And remember Catherine's Bay? Catherine's Bay said the more particular controlled over the generalized. And this is what we're exactly faced with here. Now, you're going to read this and say, well, Clark, that's all fine and good, but it says, with the exception of conservation along shoreline areas. And as it was pointed out to the PDC, they all got up and said, well, this is a shoreline. Well, in fact, the legislature was kind enough to give us a definition of shoreline, and it reads as follows. "In the interface of land and water as used in coastal management element," that's this element, "is a requirement limit to oceanic and estuarian interfaces." So oceanic means Gulf of Mexico beach, okay? Estuarian interfaces is similarly defined, is defined, not similarly. And it provides, semi, this is water bodies that are estuaries, semi-enclosed, naturally existing coastal bodies of water, which includes lagoons, sounds, tidal systems, and I can't even read my writing. But the facts of the matter is, it doesn't say canals. And if you go back to the aerial photograph, every one of the water bodies that we're involved with here is man-made, which goes back to 1975 when we didn't have FDEP. And Mr. Green was out there doing Ronnie's Marina and Fish Camp and dredged these canals. So this part of the comprehensive plan, I cited in the staff report, is in play here and needs to be resolved. And the plan would indicate that it should be resolved in favor of the applicant, if they meet code. Next one, please, Joanna. I'm trying to move this along, Madam Chairman, trust me. This is the economic development section of the code. It is an element that is not addressed a lot, but it is in the plan. It is, we're required to comply with it. And it basically says the importance of tourism in Citrus County and utilization of natural resources. The county will support and encourage the utilization of natural resources in a viral and environmentally responsible manner. We believe the application has clearly met this. Additionally, not discussed, you have recently adopted an element that deals with public's property rights. So, moving along. Traffic has been raised by the applicant. There is in your backup material, a traffic analysis, okay? We identified that Ozella Road, Collector Road, has 2,650 average daily trips on it. It is not a weight-restricted road. It is used regularly by existing RVs. It is used regularly by delivery trucks, whether it be garbage, FedEx, construction, people going to this bow ramp, people going to other bow ramps, like the county's bow ramp at the end of Ozella Trail. The bridge is not an issue, there's an engineering report. And the traffic analysis shows that the traffic from this project in relationship to all of the traffic that exists in Ozella is less than 1%. So it's not like there's going to be an overrunning of traffic in this particular area, 1%. And the analysis deals with peak hour analysis, and you're talking about 16 RVs during peak hour. Okay, and another 16 scattered over the course of a full day. One of the issues that was raised at the PDC was these clamp sites. So this is where you get to see the rest of the PowerPoint. Let's keep going, Joanna. This is Mr. Green's history here. We threw this in, and I've already spoken to it. This is 1975. Let's go to the next one, please. This is the existing building onsite, Mr. Green built, it's been there. Next one. This is, these next drawings are conceptuals if the park were to be approved. You can see the finger peels, pierced, you can skip that. They've been removed in the revised master site plan. Shows pool, recreational areas, existing sites. Keep going, Joanna, keep going. This is proposed, if the building were to be remodeled, this is what you would see. Next one, please. More of the park if developed. Next one, please, is your typical RV site. This is a clamp, clamping site. All right, it's basically a deck with some breakaway-type walls and a roof. Next one, please, Joanna. There you go, a better conceptual of what a clamping site looks like. Interestingly enough, the cost to do an RV park slabber site, approximately $15,000. This is almost twice that to have these type of units. And I know that this board has spoke to quality in its discussions recently. And this is the type of thing that represents quality. Now, the issue that was raised at the PDC in a public comment was these are all going to blow away and become missiles during the next hurricane event. The manufacturing specs are in your background. But we brought you tonight, the manufacturer. And he's going to get up here and speak, and he's going to tell you about these particular units, what happens during a hurricane, and how they're made safe from the general public and the abutters. But I want to point out to you, these units are far better, far stronger in a hurricane than any of your canvas awnings that you approve on a regular basis with a regular permit for a single-family house. These units are far stronger than any canvas carport that Citrus County approves in the coastal areas on a regular basis without hurricane restrictions. And these units are far stronger than any canvas boat cover over a boat, over a dock, than you regularly approve on any type basis. So, and finally, this issue of whether or not they can meet FEMA, wind load and all that is not a plan issue, it's a building permit issue. But we are going to address it here tonight. One of the issues that is finally raised in this application by the public is hurricane evacuation. Now, the staff report says that the time of plating, if approved... Now, their staff report says that the time of plating, if approved, a hurricane evacuation report would be required. Now, we took, we went ahead and addressed this issue already. Now, the site is in Area 1, we now all know that, it's west of US 19. So if there's a mandatory evacuation notice, it would apply to this particular site. The analysis of hurricane evacuation stems with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council in the most recent study. What that study shows in Citrus County for a Cat 1 type event up to a Cat 5 event, this hurricane evacuation takes 19.6 hours. And you look at that and say, well, that's almost three quarters of a day, Clark. Well, that's because all the traffic is from Tampa Bay and Hernando County and Pasco. And so in the hurricane evacuation study, they did the regional traffic analysis. So in that number of cars that are reflected in that report, and it's in the background material, it varies from 60,000 cars on a Cat 1 evacuation in that report, and the material in the backup, up to 100,000, 100,000 cars. Now, what the report indicates is 95%, 95% of tourists evacuate. It also says that 60% of single family residential people evacuate, which means of all those homesteaded units, we pointed out to you, 40% of them are staying in their homes during a mandatory evacuation and putting themselves and the first responders at risk. So, and when you look at the report, of that 60,000 cars, Tampa Bay has said only 850 of them are tourist related for the whole region, not Citrus County, the whole region. That's less than one half of 1% of the traffic. Citrus County recently approved a traffic analysis or hurricane evacuation on the single family residential project in the coastal area. What that traffic engineer did was he took 19.6 hours, okay? Totaled up the total minutes, he divided it by the number of cars going through for a Cat 1 versus a Cat 5, and figured out how many minutes each new car added to the 19.6 hour timeframe. And I'm telling you, 19.6 doesn't meet the state statute. Just doesn't meet it. We did the same thing here, it's in the backup material, I sent it to the county, and the time goes from 19.6 hours to evacuate, if this project were approved, to 19.63 hours. It's de minimis, because again, the number of tourists don't hang around, they cancel the reservation and move. But there are ways to address this, and I want to offer you some recommendations and conditions if you want to approve this. First thing we told the PDC is we would not condo this project. What does that mean? You can take an RV park, nature's resort, okay? You got an RV lot, and you can make an RV condo. You then sell that lot to a third party, and he puts his RV there, and it camps out there, and it stays there for a long, long time, okay? By not condoing this project, you ensure that there's short term rentals. Short term rentals means they can evacuate and will evacuate, because they've got no, for lack of a better term, skin in the game, they don't have an RBC sitting there that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they're not going to move it. Second thing is, you can require that all RVs remain road worthy onsite, okay? That means they can't take the wheels off, they got to sit there with the wheels on. And that means the time to evacuate is lessened. Third thing is, you can mandate, and we agree to, that the park will close on evacuation notice, and the park will be evacuated. Now, frankly, there's not going to be that many people when that evacuation notice hits, because the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council would tell you that there's no tourists around, they cancel the reservations, and they go. Remarkably, the study indicates that only 5% of these tourists hang around in the county. And that's Pasco, Hernando, and Citrus. They go, they go, okay? Final issue is, and there was a recent letter to the Chronicle about this, and it said this project was an ecological disaster. And that is shown throughout the letters. We know from the video, the site is not pristine, you saw what's onsite, it's previously been developed. The staff report indicates there are no material wetland impacts, and we comply with wetland setbacks and avoidance of wetlands. The stormwater per the plan will meet LDC standards and SWIFTMUD standards. What does that mean? From a non-engineer's perspective, basically, stormwater will not increase. Now, you're going to be shown pictures of flooding streets and all that? That's going to occur here, whether or not there's five homes or an RV park. Lot of discussion about the septic system. As we've indicated, the net impact is not that significant, and it is in controlled environmental situation, which we have provided you with conditions that further enhance that environmental situation to avoid any issues. And then you have the discussion in the Kings Bay case that said, generally, you know, these generalized conclusions about an environmental impact are not sufficient to, if you meet code, to deny that type of land use. All right, so, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm done, the engineer's going to speak next, and then the clients will speak, and then we'll have the gentleman from the manufacturing on these clamp sites speak.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Point of clarification for Mr. Stillwell. The county owns the Chesapeake grant, not the campground, and the access road.
Thank you, but fact of the matter is, there's a campground, right there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, please state your name.
My name is Richard Matassa with A Civil Design Group. Our offices are located at 3176 Shoal Line Boulevard in Hernando Beach, Florida. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Florida. I have similar experiences, as I was the, and am the professional engineer of record of Nature's Resort, right here in Citrus County. I've experienced a number of RV and mobile home parks across the state, including some on the Alafia Rivers, rivers here in Hernando, or Citrus County, Hernando County. I give you that background information just as informational purposes, to let you know that this isn't the first time I've ever dealt with such a project. Typically, these are complicated projects. First, let's start with the stormwater, since that appears to be a concern of people in the area. The stormwater on this project, of course, this is an open basin into the Gulf of Mexico. So the stormwater is, main concern is treatment. You're provided additional treatment volume criteria because of where it's located, and we will provide that onsite through the use of ponds, treatment ponds. The entire project will be designed to, above the 25 year storm, and it will attenuate the 25 year storm prior to discharging and treating the water. I've heard some concerns regarding traffic. Looking at the traffic generation, I know Clark had touched on this, traffic generation of this project is realistically minimal in comparison to the trips it generated around the project. Again, the large vehicles are de minimis in the total number of vehicles on the road. You're not even close to approaching 5% with this project, or even the 74 they mentioned there as being 5% of your daily trips. So it would never be a concern, it's not a concern on large vehicles as far as impacting operations from an engineering perspective. Looking at it from a planning perspective, one of the things I do want to point out that Clark may or may not have touched on a little bit, as it's surrounded, and you see, it's surrounded by the natural conservation lands around it, both to the north, to the, and to the east, and even to the west. One of the things you find interesting, and you guys had a little debate on the side here about who owns an RV park owned on some state land, you'll find that state lands all over the state, RV parks. It's a way that our residents of Florida and even tourists get to experience our wonderful nature, it's one of the reasons they come here. As Clark even pointed out, you have VRBOs out there. So obviously, the state even finds the value in using the conservation and state lands for RV parks. We've also done a lot of septic systems and pump out stations there where they don't even limit it. They know that the reality of it is a properly designed septic system, a properly operated septic system, treating the water properly is better than anybody dumping it on the ground, right? Or dumping it anywhere. And so you're going to have these type of uses, conservation uses, and you're going to have people bringing RVs and camping. And so you provide these systems designed and engineered to protect the community and the area around them. And so that's one of the things that's a very cohesive and normal use in rural conservation type areas. And we do them all the time for the state of Florida, literally. So I wanted to point that out. And lastly, I know there's been some talk, again, about flooding and how the systems are designed. Septic systems, all the residences' septic systems here in this area are designed to a 10-year storm for the lid. The drain field is set at a two-year storm, that is the Health Department rule, that is the state statute and the Florida Administrative Code. Here, we are volunteering to put it above the 25 year and even the 100 year. The other reality of the situation in this area, to be honest with you, looking at the data and the studies from the 2010 nitrogen reports, which went through aquifers, what you'll find is your aquifers here in Citrus County are actually lower in nitrogen levels than most around the state. When you read into that data and you really dig into that data, you find it interesting that the name of your community or your county is Citrus County, you don't have a lot of citrus here anymore. And that's actually good for your nitrogen levels, because what you find is, the nitrogen and phosphorus levels are clearly elevated in areas where there's high agriculture. And if you look at the data, you'll find that. Or a high density residential that's on top of a aquifer, close to it, it's close to it without a high depth of sand. And in your instance, upstream, you guys have great depth of sand. It's one of the reasons you have a lower natural level and a lower impacted level, even if you have septics, and you don't have that high of density. So you have a great geographical location, it works well for the, to filter the nitrogens naturally. And this is where it's at, this is on the, on the head of a river, so to be honest with you, and outgoing to the Gulf of Mexico where nitrogen levels, you can't throw enough nitrogen in the ocean to change the nitrogen level at the end, when you get to the headworks. So, reality is, this is already low in nitrogen, it's in the mean, as DEP sees it and the Health Department sees it. And you have septics out there right now, operating at a lower standard. And you don't see a higher elevated nitrogen level consistently from 2010 through today. So I'd like to provide that, you with that data, and just give you some information to chew on. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them. But I think that concludes my portion of the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Welcome. Please state your name.
Welcome back.
Well, thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Jen McGrath, owner of Fish Creek Glampground. My address is 1650 South Fish Creek Point, Crystal River. I want to thank the county's staff for their time and effort on this project. We are asking you to vote yes on this proposed facility. I am proud to call Citrus County home and raise our children here, I think they're upstairs or wherever Everflow is. We reside a very short walk from the Glampground. As a result, our commitment to safety and family values is a top priority. My family and I began this journey in 2021 with the dream to build a high-end campground. I believe in truth, and so tonight, I wanted to, I want to, my time to focus on the facts, and those facts are as follows. Number one, Fish Creek is focused on ecotourism with modern amenities. It will include luxurious tents, RV sites, and primitive camping sites. The glamping tents are estimated to cost north of $60,000 per site. They are weather hardened facilities that are incredibly safe and very attractive. Number two, our Glampground aligns with the county's vision for the responsible and right type of tourism development. It supports positive growth for our community, will create jobs, and contribute to the economy. Number three, one of the key reasons we purchased this property is that it was an operational RV park in the 80s, evidence of which can still be seen throughout, throughout the property, as you saw earlier. In 1984, the commission approved that site for 150 RV spaces. Number four, we offer a family friendly atmosphere. Some are worried about loud noise and all night parties. Commissioners, let me be clear, I am a mom of young children, and we live right near the property, so noise would certainly impact us more than just about anybody. We will have strict noise rules and quiet hours, just like all other upscale campgrounds. Number five, the Glampground will benefit existing businesses throughout the county, having a multiplier effect on the local economy. I am an active, an active member of Citrus County Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Business Women's Alliance, and we hear repeatedly the desire for more accommodations, for more accommodations in this county. Again, this is consistent with Citrus County's vision. And number six, for the past two years, we have improved the property through extensive cleanup of trash, tires, and debris. I ask that you take all of these facts into consideration when making your choice this evening. And I would like to leave you with one final thought. Imagine what the property would look like a year from now if approved, an attractive, high-end, low-impact Glampground that attracts high-end tourists. It will be well-maintained and thriving by committed local owners. Now imagine it a year from now if you choose to vote no. The best-case scenario is that it looks somewhat the way it does now, provided that we can support the boat ramp. If not, we are forced to sell. Who is that new buyer? Would it be a developer that lives in Miami with zero cares about this community? Who will try to build as many houses as possible? Is that better for this community? If something like that happens, you'll be right back here with the same opposition, just on a different day. We stand here tonight grateful to a community that is very dear to our hearts. We love Citrus County and are committed to making this proposal benefit everyone. And with that, I humbly ask that you make the choice to approve Fish Creek Glampground. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the last presentation from the applicant?
Richard.
Thank you.
I'm the, one of the owners of the company that manufactures and installs the tents, and I think one of the only people in the room without an accent. Yeah. So I just wanted to share a little bit about our company. We, you can hear from my actions, I'm from South Africa. The tents are African safari tents, they were developed in South Africa. We have a factory in South Africa that employs about 500 people. We've been manufacturing the glamping tents for about 25 years, but actually been doing military and hospital type tents for about 50 years. So we've been around for many, many years, and I boast that we are probably the highest quality glamping tents that you can buy anywhere in the world. More recently, in, so we have thousands of installations around the world. The industry started in Africa with safaris, and then it spread into Europe, it spread into Asia, Australia. The US was one of the slowest to adopt it, but we've been here for about seven or eight years installing these around the US. And as of now, we're in about 24 states, and I didn't count the counties, but it's dozens. And I didn't count the counties, but it's dozens of counties, because many of the states have multiple counties where we've done these installations. So we've got them all over the place. They are built to, 99% of what we make are custom-made because we build them to the conditions. So we've got tents in deserts, and we've got tents in heavy, heavy snowstorms. And you can't put the same tent in both locations. So if we did a project like this, we would make sure that the tents are tailored to high winds, obviously, is an issue over here. I happen to live in Boca Raton, Florida, so I understand hurricanes well. So I'll just share three projects we've done around the country. I mean, as I said, there are dozens. We have, we recently sold 55 tents to a project that is going up between Tampa and Orlando. So it's not this county, but it's another county in Florida, and they're putting 55 of our tents in as, as we speak. We did a project for, for tents up in Governor's Island in New York. The reason I bring that up is we actually put a tent up there right after hurricane hit Governor's Island. What we did is we increased the steel weight of, of the frames. We did everything we had to, and it got passed by the engineers and it got permitted. So we, we don't just drop in something that's going to, I heard somebody say it's going to turn into a missile and hit somebody. That's not what we do, and we've been doing this for many, many, many years. A, a third project that I would, that I would, we, we've done a project in California. California is a tough state to get permit to. We actually have multiple projects there. We, we just got hit by a hurricane in, in the Mexican Peninsula. So, so we, we've done this a lot of times, and we've done this before. In terms of the tents themselves, what, what we are proposing for this project is, is not to leave the tents up to ride out a category-five hurricane. And that's not the idea here. I will tell you that our standard tent installation, the one on that image over there, that tent over there, and we have engineering reports amongst our 500 people in South Africa, and in the US, we've got engineers, and we have engineering reports that will show that tent will withstand a tropical storm, or a Cat 1 hurricane, maybe even a Cat 2 hurricane. But if it gets hit by a category-five hurricane, we wouldn't leave that thing standing up. So if there's a hurricane of that force coming over, our proposition is to drop the tent to the ground. And we would drop it to the, the ground, and then there's a way we strap it down to the decking structure to secure the tent. And we would not leave it up. We definitely wouldn't want any guests riding out the storm in, in a tent. That's not the idea here. We can drop one of those tents, that particular tent there. Myself and a couple of other people, I've got a bit more experience, but we'll train the team, could put that, that tent on the ground and strap it down in less than an hour. So if they put up, you know, a dozen, a couple dozen, I hope they put up lots of tents, we could get those tents down easily ahead of a hurricane. Because, you know, as everyone knows, you get multiple days of warning, and we would start securing those down. So I'm here if anyone has any questions. But I just wanted to fly in here to represent the, the group, to, just to dispel the misnomer that we're just putting up these dangerous structures that in a hurricane is going to be flying around and become projectiles and missiles. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Sir. The bases, are they set in concrete?
So there are multiple ways that these things could be installed. And we would, we would, in consultation with our engineers, we would decide how to do them. So that one over there, the, the, the wooden beams are going through the deck into concrete footers in the ground, in that particular case. The one we did in Governor's Island, for example, we actually did the frame, the legs in steel. And I don't know what it is in, in Imperial system, but in metric system, our normal tent frame is a 38-millimeter. We took it up to 50 millimeters. We do a 38, a 44, a 50. So the answer to your question is, that one is in concrete, and that's usually what we do. But we would tailor the installation to the conditions. So definitely here, we would not just attach it to the deck and then hope that, because it's going to pull the deck boards off, it's going to come off, it's going to be anchored into the ground.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan.
Hi there.
Hi.
You're saying that in case of a hurricane, you drop it to the ground?
Yes.
But wouldn't, if those are permanent structures that people stay in, wouldn't FEMA require them to be way high off the ground in that area?
No, you, you can do these structures flat on a concrete slab on the ground. So when I say we would drop it to the ground, in this particular case, if it was this tent, I'm not, we're not dropping the deck, we're not dropping the wooden poles, we're dropping the actual tent. So the tent body gets, gets unfastened and it drops down. And then the things over the top are what they're called fly sheets. We take those off, and we use those actually to rainproof. Our canvas is rainproof, but we use that to anchor it down. So the answer is no. FEMA does not expect these things to be elevated. Now, we've done units in flood zones. And if it's in a flood plain, then we do elevate them. I would still drop the tent down and anchor it to the deck, which is then elevated. I don't know if that's easy to understand.
Thank you, and please, please forgive me. I, I trust all your information, but Joanna?
Is that, they're, they won't be up in the air?
I think he said they were in flood zones, that they meet FEMA elevations. Wasn't that what you were saying?
I don't know yet, because we haven't actually done the planning with, with this client to understand exactly where the tents are going. But if they are in flood zones, flood zones, we'd elevate them. If they're not, we won't. And we haven't even spoken to them about if they want the platforms to be wooden decks or concrete slabs, because we can do either. So I, I, I can't answer your question specifically on this project. But we've done all of the above. I mean, I can show you pictures where the decks are the height of this roof, and then I can show you others that are flat to the ground.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes the applicant's presentation. We thank you for your patience. Just want to add just two things. The decks, these wooden decks, we've reviewed them with the FEMA regs, and because the water flows underneath them, and because it's not a livable, permanent livable-type structure, the elevation criteria don't apply, just long as you keep them elevated with the water underneath. But the wind load criteria and the construction criteria do apply, that there are, can withstand that type of event. If you, very similar to a garage-type area underneath a house that's elevated. And also out there, if you don't know it, it's all rock. Okay, that whole area is just rock. So that's what it's going to be set in. And discussing the economic development element, I failed to point out, and I think it has some merit, as you know from our recent newspapers, Citrus County enjoys the fourth-highest unemployment rate at 4.6% in the whole state of Florida out of 67 counties. Tourism is a major element of our economy here. Clearly, this project will facilitate tourism, tourism dollars, but it also will facilitate further employment in the area. Thank you. If there are any other questions, we'll be glad to try and answer them.
Board? Commissioner Davis?
Since you brought up employment, how many people would be employed there on average?
Probably less than five.
Thank you.
Remember, please be respectful of everyone. Thank you, Mr. Stillwell.
And glad to see you back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I might be sorry to be back today. Ms. Katu?
You ready, or you want a break, or you good?
No, I'm, I'm okay. I don't know about the rest of them, but I'm okay.
I can, I can promise you I will not take an hour and a half for this presentation. How sad. All right. This is an application to change the land use and the comprehensive plan, the zoning and the land development code on approximately 16.1 acres. So this is the Land Development Code Atlas map, which you, Mr. Stillwell did reference. Now, what you'll see here is two different land uses. PDRMH is the majority of it existing. That was awarded in 1990 when we created the Land Development Code Atlas, the current one. And that was recognizing a master plan that actually had been approved back in the eighties. Now, the island there, CLRMH, that actually had a house on it, so it was not part of it. It has the same zoning as the surrounding area, which is residential.
I'm so sorry.
No problem.
What page are you on?
I am on my PowerPoint, and I don't know what pages they are in the packet.
You know I'm going to ask you that every time.
I know, and I never look at what pages they are, because I don't think I have them numbered.
I'll, I'll do it on my own. I'll figure it out.
I don't have them numbered, but I think they're at the very back of your packet.
Okay. Continue.
Okay, so the, the actual land use on the comprehensive plan for the entire site is CL. That's compatible with the surrounding area, which is all CL. So this does not have a RMU that you're used to seeing for master plans. This master plan hasn't been active for some time. So this was the existing, the first master plan that we actually saw. Mr. Stillwell has referenced that. I'm going to talk about that in just a moment. But I wanted to tell you about the two plans that the Planning Board saw. The Planning and Development Commission, yes, ma'am?
It's page 1158.
Thank you.
Did you see my frustration?
Nope. I was looking. 1158.
1158 in the packet. Thank you. I need to remember to look that up, and I apologize. So the PDC had two hearings on this application. The first hearing they heard was a total of 65 sites, 37 RVs, some glamping, and some primitive sites. At that hearing, the applicant did verbally change it to 60 sites. That's what that asterisk with the star is. We did not see a plan for that, but they had proposed five less glamping sites. The PDC did not recommend approval. The applicant revised the plan quite a bit, and, but came up with 32 RV sites, 16 glamping sites, but quite a bit more primitive sites for a, a total increase in number of 68 sites throughout the plan.
Joanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Primitive sites? Just where I would go out and put a tent?
Yeah, you heard Mr. Stillwell describe it as basically a cleared area for a tent. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is the master plan that's been submitted. And I did highlight here for the PDC, and to let you see in color, the changes from the first plan. But this also shows you what's going on here. We have a lot of primitive sites. Those are the purple. Those are the additional ones they added. The applicant did add a natural buffer with a fence along Fish Creek Point. That's the top part of that map. That was not in the first plan. They added a boardwalk to the dog park that's on the other side of the wetlands there on Fish Creek. And you'll see that in the top left of this photo. They took out the docks that they, we have no record of, so those were taken out. They do have one owner dock. I'll tell you, your comprehensive plan does not allow you to have an owner dock, non-residential. But I'm going to go over the pictures a little bit, and we'll come back to this, I think. All right, so this is the corner of Bear Creek and Fish Creek Point. This is where you turn. You saw this a little bit in the video. The roads are very narrow. This is part of the site. You do see some infrastructure there, yes. Historically, there was a special exception in '84 for 50 RV sites in five tent spaces. That has been closed for at least 10 years. Can't document more because those records are old and not available. We did see in 1975 an old map that showed 30 sites. Not sure if those were mobile homes or RVs, but that is also in your packet. So Mr. Stillwell showed a better picture of the site here. This was the, the main building that's there. And this is some of the area, also a part of the main building, and then you can see the water in the background. And this is the boat ramp. I can tell you that our records, even from '75, show this boat ramp here. We have no, no questions, no arguments. This boat ramp appears to have been in continuous operation, although not exactly in the greatest shape in this picture. But it has been operating. There is a sign out there that it has been a private boat ramp for club members for some time. That can continue to operate regardless of the outcome of this particular application. This is behind the building, and they have added, someone has added, maybe not this particular owner, this unpermitted dock area. They're calling it a loading platform. It does meet the definition of dock in your comp plan. They cannot have this here. Your comp plan will not allow this new dock to be here. And this is the area where there was apparently some docks. You can see some pilings long ago, not vested, can't add docks here. But this is where the owner's dock on the plan has been put. This is the footbridge. I hate to call it footbridge. It's actually concrete and seemed incredibly sturdy. I had no hesitation walking across it to the island. And there are some seawall areas within the site. It's not all seawall. Some of it's riprap, some of it's natural. But this is part of the seawall near the building. And this is looking across at the marsh area. It is very close to quite a bit of conservation areas, as Mr. Stillwell discussed. This is actually on the island. Excuse me. You can see some tree removal here. They have left some trees on there scattered, but there were some tree removals action recently here. And some of the stumps along the waterway, those should not have happened. We have talked to the applicant about that. But then you also can see the seawall here. This is on the island. This is an old structure. It was going to be a restroom. I'm not sure they're actually going to build this anymore. But this is here. There are some disturbed areas on the island itself. And this is looking from that footbridge down the canal. It's a very beautiful piece of property, like most of Ozella. It's very attractive, and you can see the riprap there on the left. And looking across, this is more of a natural area, looking across to the marsh. And this is the entry gate. Now, the PDC has specific concerns about this site, simply talking about traffic backing up on Fish Creek when they're trying to enter and where those RVs are going to go, and hopefully they wouldn't be parking along Fish Creek. So that was a point of discussion with the PDC. And this is the original plan. I'm going to go back a bit and go to the new plan. Hang on just a moment. I thought we had better tech than this, but it's probably me. All right, site plan. So you'll see the owner's docks there on the canal. That is definitely a concern. There's a kayak storage rack also identified there in the middle of the, the structure. This applicant has stated that all the structures will meet a 35-foot waterfront setback and a 35-foot wetland setback. That is wonderful. The only exception would be, of course, the existing pavilion and this kayak storage area. So this storage building should be moved back to meet the 35-foot. You'll see some tentative conditions in your packet. And if so, it's proposed, staff is proposing to actually do that. The, the loading platform is identified next to the pavilion. Cannot support that unless it is for non-motorized watercraft. That, that could be something they specify. Now, you'll see on the island, they did remove the glamping proposal that was out there. Instead, they have a kayak launch, some open space, and some primitive sites. So some deviations. I've talked about a few. The docks cannot have a deviation. That certainly is not allowed. The stacking of RVs I talked about. The 25-foot wetland buffer, 35-foot setback. They're doing a 25-foot wetland buffer instead of a 35 buffer. This is not waterfront setbacks, but a buffer area. They would, they're asking for a 25 instead of a 35. That totally would be up to you. The two new dock slips are not okay. And you heard Mr. Stillwell talk about pro-offer some conditions if this application is approved regarding septic and, and the sewer, sewer that they're trying to do. Just to summarize a little bit, I don't always agree with Mr. Stillwell, but I do agree with one thing that he said, which was that the comprehensive plan does expect that RV parks would be allowed in a coastal area. Absolutely, with a nature coast, and that's not precluded simply because you're on the coast or on the lakes or rivers. What I do disagree about is, it doesn't mean that every site on the coast is appropriate for an RV park. Your Planning and Development Commission did not find this compatible with the surrounding area. You'll hear a lot of testimony. You see a lot of public input about the roadways to this area and the winding roads to that, as well as the proximity to the marsh and the wetlands. So they did not find this supported. They did not support this. They are recommend, they recommended denial. But again, you have conditions of approval in your packet.
Board, any questions? Commissioner Davis?
Ms. Katu, could you talk to us about what is vested on this property? I've heard you say it, and then I heard, I saw it in the PDC minutes as well.
Right. So, so because it's PDRMH, it has a dead plan development. It's not been active. So they don't have anything vested for the moment. They would have to change, either remove the PDR or re-establish a master plan. If we just went with the, the commercial, the dock, the dock that they're using as a private dock can abs, not dock, excuse me, the ramp can continue. No questions asked. That can continue as long as it continues in operation. Thank you. I'm sorry. Otherwise, we, we have multiple lots here. Mr. Stillwell said four. Actually, there's six, but they're not all upland. So I, I think realistically, three to four houses could possibly be put here. One on the island was there before. You'd have to meet setbacks, and then you'd have to find out how you're going to get water and sewer to those sites. But it's possible to change this consistent with the surrounding area to residential and get a few houses there. I don't think six is realistic, but I think... I don't think six is realistic, but I think three or four may. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? Joanna?
Chairman? Oh, I was just going to ask if you want to.
Joanna, I um I've read every page three times. I had a few weeks of medical leave that this was so exciting. And I, but I um, I I want to ask you a few things. Because my decision is, I haven't made up my mind. In eighty-six, actually in eighty-four, it was zoned, and correct me at any time. My research, talking to our county attorney, because I didn't talk to you, the zoning was RVC PD. I couldn't find what RVC PD dash PD meant, so I'm going to say my guess was recreation vehicle, commercial, planned development. How close am I?
You're very close, yes, absolutely. That that was eighty-six. I cannot tell you what the eighty-four special exception, what it was that day, but I I can see the eighty-six maps reflected that on the mainland, not on the island portion. The island portion was residential.
And right now, because from two thousand twelve to twenty twenty-one, it was owned by, went out of my head, and and you couldn't confirm what was happening out at this property?
I can tell you that at least ten years, there's no, there's no records. I don't know twenty, twenty-twelve, I can see something on an aerial, but after looking at their drone film, that might have been those structures that were that were falling apart, the two, because that's all you can see. Could not find evidence of an RV park at all here. However, we know there was one there. We have a a listing that there was one there, but the records are just too old.
Okay, so right now, today, it's zoned residential?
It's zoned PDR MH on the ma, on the mainland and residential on the island, but the PDR has expired, so they kind of have a no zone until they, until they decide to either put a master plan in place or remove it and go to residential.
And how common is it to have a no zone in Citrus County?
In the coastal area, it's unfortunately more common than we'd like to have it. It's it's puds, puds, don't happen.
Okay, and is that because is this is, I mean, is this the way Citrus County's been run? I mean?
No, it's just that development changes over time. Mr. Stillwell talked a lot about Catherine's Bay. That never got built, so they are in a similar situation. They have a pud that wasn't built and is now expired. It happens.
Well, according to what has been supplied to me for backup and this whole seventeen seventy-six pages, I I recognize that it's been, it is now zoned for residential, but I couldn't find any backup establishing that it's ever been used residential. Can you help me with that?
I can tell you that the island was. We absolutely see that there was a house on the island, and the island still has that residential designation on the Atlas and the Future Land Use Map.
Okay.
The 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 mainland itself.
Can you show that to me on your?
Um, it's, I did not put, oh, yeah, I didn't put the future land use in here. It's in your packet, but I do have it on this screen for the zoning. So you see the CLRMH on the island, and so that is residential like the rest of the area, mostly. There's some conservation out there. And that is a residential zoning. The rest of it, the main, what I'm calling the mainland, has the PDR MH designation. And no, I I have no idea if there was ever a house there. I I don't think so. We can see that there was once an RV park once there, or a mobile home park.
So in one of your, on one of your photos, you said that there's a owner or residential dock, but that's not allowed, but you're saying it's residential, and could you please explain that to me?
Yeah, because there's not a house here. The dock there, they're calling it owner's dock, but it's not a residential lot. Right now, this is a, like I said, a no, no zone, but it's a PDR lot. They're asking for non-residential. The the comprehensive plan with the manatee element talks about no new non-residential docks. Calling it an owner's dock does not change the fact that it is a non-residential site and would be used for a non-residential purpose. That's the problem with that. If they have, they put a house here, sure, they can have a dock.
Okay, so it seems like Ozella, which is a very beautiful area, but it seems like, I'm going to use the word eclectic.
I I think, yeah, I think they're agreeing with you on that one.
Okay, and, okay, thank you. My brain is full. Okay. Is there anything else? Is, does the county rest their case?
Clark's got something.
And we're going into a problem.
Mr. Stillwell?
I just want to be clear.
Well, maybe it's a fire alarm.
I'm sorry, I, I don't, I'm not sure what you're doing.
I thought we were cross-examining.
Well, we haven't heard from the public. You want to cross-examine the, very good, go ahead.
I want to be clear about this, the boat dock. It was approved as part of your research. The boat dock was approved as part of the eighty-four master plan. First, it predates the Manatee Protection Plan.
The boat dock?
The boat ramp.
The boat ramp, yes. I, as I said, no concerns with the boat ramp, that is recognized.
I just want to make sure that how it, how it got there was tied in with the eighty-four site plan.
I don't know it.
Okay.
The special exemption?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, and to be honest, I think you didn't go further back than that, because if you look at the historical stuff we've provided in the PowerPoint, it shows.
Is this cross-examination, or is this more Mr. Stillwell talking?
Thank you, Ms. Lynn, I I agree.
I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
I got to keep order.
I agree, I agree.
I'll let you attorneys.
No, you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Thank you. Okay, so we.
May I suggest that we take a break?
I think it is actually a perfect time for a break. It's seven o'clock and before we open to the public, so everybody can get a bathroom break and, well, we will meet back here in ten minutes, seven-ten. Thank you. Hope everybody got a chance to get a little break. At this time, we're going to open to the public. And sir, I forgot your name, so sorry, but please, do you have a letter on file?
No, he's there.
He's good, okay. I know he's an attorney, but.
I'll introduce myself again.
Does he get five minutes? Okay, that, yeah. I always got to check.
I understand.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name and what firm you're with and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Ralph Brooks, attorney, and I'm board certified in city, county, and local government law. I have my own practice. I was formerly Sarasota County Deputy Attorney and formerly Monroe County's Land Use Litigation Attorney throughout the nineties. I've been certified in this field since two thousand four, and I graduated from the University of Florida in nineteen eighty-eight and the University of Miami in marine biology in nineteen eighty-five. I've also served as the town of Yankee Town Attorney, and I'm currently one of the attorneys for the City of Naples and a town called the City of, town of Kenneth City in Pinellas County. We ask you to consider these two things separately. The plan amendment, you can deny and you should deny for any reason. You can keep your existing comprehensive plan, your future land use map intact. Why? Because the geographic location of this property will not change. No matter what you call it, this is still the same property. It's located within the one-hundred-year floodplain, and it's at the end of three residential streets that are subject to flooding, frequent inundation. Any reason is good enough to say no to a plan amendment. In the Catherine's Bay Fagin's case, I was on the other side of Mr. Stillwell in that case. The county commission voted to approve that campground. We went to the administrative law judge. She found it was incompatible and inconsistent, and then we were, again, as she explained, overruled. But that's because this board of county commissioners made its decision to approve, and we had to try to overturn that. That's very difficult. But for you to make a decision to deny, it's impossible for this applicant to challenge that plan amendment because it's a legislative decision. Then, after you deny that, there's a rezoning application. They call it an atlas change here, but that's a rezoning, and your attorney can explain that, is subject to the Brevard versus Snyder Florida Supreme Court test. First, it's the applicant's burden to show they're consistent with the comprehensive plan, and they're not. They have to change the comprehensive plan to be consistent. That's why they have two applications running concurrently. They're inconsistent admittedly with the current CL designation. Even if they are consistent with the comp plan, you change it, you can still say no at this time for any legitimate public purpose. It might be that your roads aren't improved well enough. It might be that your central, regional central system hasn't been extended to this property. It might be in some point in the future, but it hasn't happened yet. So the Florida Supreme Court established in Brevard versus Snyder that the plan only sets a long-term maximum, not a beginning minimum. The question was raised, what's competent substantial evidence? You're going to hear from laypersons today, and that can be considered competent substantial evidence for the rezoning. Again, you don't even need competent substantial evidence for a plan amendment. That's up to you, what your legislative decision would be, and you can deny that. A layperson can talk about non-expert stuff in a zoning case. It's perfectly permissible as long as it's fact-based, it's observations, testimony about relevant facts and documents, including photographs, aerials, and maps. And that's from the Day County versus Blumenthal case, and DeGroot versus Sheffield says, well, what is competent substantial? It's anything that would be sufficiently relevant and material that a reasonable mind, which you all have, would accept as adequate to support your conclusion for denial for any legitimate public purpose on a rezoning. What are the private property rights of an applicant? They have a right to some reasonable use of the land. You've heard from your planning staff that they can have three, perhaps four, maybe more, single-family homes on this par, on these four parcels. Are you liable under Burt Harris if you say no to either of these applications? No. Burt Harris only prevents the downzoning of property. It doesn't require you to upzone property. So you can maintain the existing CL land use designation and the existing CLRMH zoning and PDR MH zoning, even though we heard there isn't a zoning there. They are still controlled by the land use CL. What surrounds them, you saw on the zoning map, it's very similar for the land use map, to the north, conservation, to the south, CLMA, CLRMH, and CLRMH to the east and conservation to the west. And there are vacant state-owned conservation lands that are very important. The other surrounding existing land uses are either vacant or improved single-family homes. The Planning Development Commission voted five-two to sustain a motion for denial. So they made a motion for denial, and then they made a motion for denial again, and it was six-two. So these are the folks that you appointed to help guide you as recommending advisory body. And it's important to point out, in the Fagin case that I mentioned, both of us mentioned earlier, that was on Halls River Road, which is a much larger, major collector road. Is that my timer ready? Cut it real quick. Your land development code allows park-model trailers that can be fourteen feet wide. The standard RV is a hundred and two inches wide. If you have two hundred and two inches, that's two hundred and four inches. The roadway and estuary is two hundred and thirteen, pavement edge to pavement edge. That gives you about ten inches between RVs that pass. There's five inches between RVs passing on West Bear Creek. On Fish Point Creek, there is minus two inches between two RVs. Flooding is commonplace. You'll see edge cracking, and you'll see tire ruts, and you'll see photographs of those as the laypersons get up to speak. There's load stress and roadway depressions on these roads. The county sewer is not currently available. They've changed the words in their application to argue that centralized is the same thing as central, and it's not. The maximum package plant for these is five thousand. They said it's going to be six thousand eight hundred, so they would have to have two package plants. And we would ask you to say no to these applications. They're not in a good location. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Now, I gave him extra time, but for for us to get out of here before, you know, tomorrow morning, I'm going to stick to the three minutes. I'm going to start with you. And just at a, you know, being basic human needs, so three minutes, and I don't mean to be rude, but I might have to be.
Ruthie, you know that's tough for me, three minutes.
That's Commissioner Ruthie to you.
Commissioner Ruthie.
Okay, go ahead, sir. State your name.
I'm Michael G. Siewinski, environmental consultant, professional address, twenty-seven sixteen South La Canto Highway. I'm here on behalf of Protect Ozella Waters. In all cases like this, as a scientist, I attempt to look at the current conditions and evaluate the potential environmental impacts and consider the balance, consider and balance the pros and cons of the project. The pros are that the Sunshine RV proposes, proposes an RV camping, glamping park adjacent to the St. Martin's Aquatic Preserve, so that they could use the proximity. But as my friend Gene Strickland said, location, location, location. This is not the right location. Such activities, such as RV camping adjacent to parklands, have been contemplated and addressed in the Citrus County Land Development Code and its policies. However, in accordance with the code, they must have regional sewer, which this does not have, be compatible with the surrounding land uses, you've heard this, protect wetlands, and address hurricane evacuation, among other criteria. You would also expect something like this to, a project like this, to be located on a collector road, which this is not, and you will hear testimony about why this is incompatible, because it's not on a collector road, has to go through residential. Today, I am not going to speak extensively about wetlands, as you hear me talk about commonly, but just to say that the current plans apparently do not meet the current thirty-five foot and fifty-foot wetland setbacks. I've heard a twenty-five-foot wetland buffer. It's also my understanding, and we'll be entering here, that there's current violations on the site that that the landowner conducted mangrove removals without permits and is under consent order, as well as trimming mangroves. And you saw evidence of that in some of the photos. With regard to the central or the proposed sewer system, it does not address the site-specific conditions on whether an onsite sewage disposal system is suitable or compatible with the site. And I bring up the old Bible, the old Citrus County Soil Survey. That soil survey shows that the Hallendale rockout crop, which is the soil onsite, has severe limitations for any sort of onsite sewage disposal system. It's in there, you know? You won't find this on the internet. You got to go back to the library. Policy three-point-three-point-one requires an assessment as to the vulnerability for contamination. And what I would say to you here with regard to onsite sewage disposal systems is it's been well-studied on the Homosassa River, that the main source of E. coli there is from septic system. That's why Citrus County and the DEP is spending millions of dollars retrofitting the sewer system. That is why also Long Ford Island Trail, they have taken the Encore RV package plant off and connected it to sewers. It's just inappropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Lynn, could you let me know about the policy three-point-three-point-one that he was talking about? Yes, sir.
I, you're not excused.
Well, I thought what we agreed to in the preliminary was that Mr. Brooks, Mrs. Siewinski would go following me, and then I thought we would go to pro and then con.
Well, we said, I said that Mr. Brooks could go, would be the first person to open to the public. I don't know where Mike came from.
I know where it came from.
But Mr. Brooks, we said, would be the first person in line.
So it's, I just go back to your normal process, pro and con.
Yes, so would, could you address what Mr. Stillwell just said?
Usually you do pro and con when you open to the public.
Do you want to do pro first or con first?
You usually do pro first and then do con.
Okay, so then we were out of order, saying Mr. Brooks could go first.
We agreed to that.
Oh, okay. It was Mike that messed it up, wasn't it? Okay, so what, I'm sorry, Mr. Strickland, are you pro?
No.
Okay, then, would you please sit down? Okay, if you are for this project, please line up on the wall. Once you speak, I ask that you please go, if you want to keep watching, go to the overflow so that other pros so that other pros can come forward. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Okay, people, can we please keep the cross-talk to a minimum out of courtesy the people coming forward? Thank you. Please state your name and where you live, and just 3 minutes, and I'm going to be, you know, tight to it. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Cullen. I'm a resident and business owner in Crystal River. I've had the privilege of working alongside Jen with our efforts through the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce Business Women's Alliance. Jen is a local female business owner who is passionate about our community. She understands the importance of preserving our ecosystem. Her plan's to beautify the property by keeping the healthy native trees, removing any invasive overgrowth such as pepper trees, and adding additional landscape that is native to Florida, and are surely plans that have been well-thought-out down to every detail. The learning center will provide education to the tourists on our native wildlife, and our partnership with the local wildlife sanctuary will allow for additional educational opportunities, not just for tourists, but for our local community as well. We need more businesses in Citrus County that are more focused on preserving and highlighting our nature and less focused on land clearing. I support Fish Creek Glampground. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hey, guys, my name is Alyssa Colossen. I am the president of Alyssa's Critters Wildlife Rescue. I think whatever side that we're on today, we can all agree that we all care about the environment and the animals. And one of the big reasons why I support Fish Creek is due to the amount of changes that we have in Citrus County with all of the building. This is really the best thing I could possibly ask for as a professional wildlife rehabber. They are going to put a learning center in there so I can teach people about the environment and how to protect the waters and the animals that nobody's protecting right now. So that's why I support Fish Creek.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Patricia Malagatch. I am a Citrus County resident. I love where I live, and I also love to travel in my RV. Most of us from the county understand that lifestyle. Drive down Ozella Trail, and you will see just about every other home has a camper or an RV. If you live in one of the most beautiful states, it's second nature to just hop in your RV and take a long weekend. We are so blessed to have such a beautiful community, and I'm happy to support Fish Camp Glampground and their passion to create a unique campground, and I will only have to drive a few miles to enjoy. I know the McGrats as well. The property they purchased several years ago needed a lot, needed a lot of love. They have hauled truckloads of trash and old tires off that place. It has truly been a labor of love and beautified this area for our neighbors. They are not proposing a huge campground or large RV motor home, mobile home park. They are proposing a family-oriented place where they can raise our kids and teach them to be entrepreneurs and protectors of our environment. As landowners, we have the right to build something for our future generations to pass along. I support this project for all of us who love a weekend getaway with the kids and for our kids' future getaways with our kids. Thank you. Please vote in favor of this project. By the way, I have drove my motor home to that property. I had no problems with the road, and it was torrential rain. It was phenomenal. I had no problems with it. It's a beautiful place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Isabella Malagatch. I am 14 years old and am a student here in Citrus County. While other kids are at home watching Gilmore Girls or texting their friends, I'm here to support Fish Creek Campground. You might wonder why on earth would a teenager like me be here for that? It's simple. I love Citrus County and support ecotourism because it helps grow our economy while protecting the environment. With Fish Creek, we have a chance to do something new, something amazing, and something that protects the environment for future generations like mine. I have been to their property, and it was very poorly cared for before they got there. There are abandoned trailers and drunk, and junk all over that place, and the owners are still removing them themselves. If somebody wants to complain about what they are trying to do, maybe they should stop and thank them for what they're already doing. Heck, if we had more people like them, our environment would be a lot cleaner. We all know our environment is very unique and very delicate. Protecting it requires a new way of thinking, a way that my generation is soon going to lead. The county says it wants ecotourism. Great, here's your chance. The county, sorry, Fish Creek already has voluntary recycling programs that nobody asked them to create, so scallop shells don't litter our roads, shorelines, and rivers. They built a handicap lift without being asked. They teach kids how to love the environment, how to protect the environment. They want to, they want to work with our schools to do that. Someday soon, my generation is going to be the ones protecting this community, and I know it's going to be a lot easier with businesses like Fish Creek that already are doing their part. Thank you for listening to me and taking my views into consideration. Please vote yes on this important project.
I assume your mom and dad are here?
My mother is. She just came up.
Very proud of her, and not saying I'm going with either side that you're stating, but your poise and your dictation is excellent, and I'm proud to see someone that's 14 years old come up here and speak like you have spoken to us. It's very rare, and you should be proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name is James Floyd. I run a charter out of Fish Creek Boat Ramp, and I support Fish Creek. I've heard some opponents make very disparaging comments about Jenna Dimitri and the proposed glamp ground. These are simply unformed rumors started by small groups who want to delegate the growth of this community. Most people in this county support this project despite the opponents that are trying to spin out-of-town letters and phony petitions. Jenna Dimitri have taken location known for seedy activity and turning it into something beautiful that our residents can be proud and share with visitors. Opponents, trailers, piles of junk, and existing concrete slabs for a campground already there. There is even an abandoned septic system, too. How is this pristine? This, they try to pull heartstrings, but they're being dishonest. The fact is that the property is improving only because of the owners have hauled off truckloads of garbage and debris. They are friendly local residents that want to see this community grow in the right way. They started a scallop shell cleaning program to protect the waterways. They even built the county's first and only ADA-accessible boat lift for seniors, veterans, and disabled community. Can also enjoy this rich natural treasure. I see them out there teaching their kids about nature. My livelihood depends on a healthy environment, and I can assure you that what they, sorry, what they are proposing is better than the illegal dumping area that is, that was there before. It would be nice for the community to have a high-end campground for people to stay at while they visit. This turn will bring further funds into our county and local businesses. Every person that comes for a charter always asks, "What's a great place to stay?" And during certain times of the year, these places are sold out. Therefore, they turn around and go back the same day, not putting a dime into anything local here except my business. We are shooting our county and all it has to offer if we decline this proposal. This isn't just another campground. This is something that benefits not only our county, but the younger generations for year to come. I ask respectfully that you all please vote and approve this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Perfect timing. Next speaker.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Patrick Swansky. I'm a resident of Citrus Springs. I've been in Citrus County now for a couple of years, living here as a resident. I've been visiting Citrus County for over 2 decades. And I always felt, we used to go take our motorcycles down Ozella, and when I got down to the end of it, I was like, wow, this is beautiful down here. You know, and thought, should be a campground here. And whenever years go past, years go past, now I live here, and I met Dimitri, and he says he's doing it. And I was like, wow, this is great, a place to take my family to go, go camping, enjoy the family life. I can bring my pontoon boat, stay in one of his little tents, and put the boat in right there and have a great time. And I just think it'd be wonderful to have a family-oriented place that obviously they said, everybody else said, can teach my daughters about the environment, how to, how to help the environment, how to be eco-friendly, and, you know, stuff they're not teaching them in school. So I am for this glamp ground, and I think it'd be a great addition to Citrus County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Debbie Sullivan, and I reside at 1645 South Fish Creek Point. I am the immediate next-door neighbor and previous owner of the Fish Creek property. This property was a campground back in the 80s and has since been operating as a boat ramp, and I had a gift stored there. The original foundation for the campground and RV site still exists. John and I created many, many, many good memories with friends, family, and neighbors on that property. Some came with their RVs. We had bonfires, love, and a lot of laughter. A lot of cooking went on out there. People really came together. A lot of the people in the back here, not all of them, they were at those parties with us. This is why I sold the property to Jenna Dimitri, to carry on that closeness and vision of people. This young couple has a vision to breathe new life into this property by bringing back the campground and a more upscale glamp ground and RV park that will restore beauty once again to this area of our community. Knowing people are enjoying themselves and sharing the love of the nature is something that would make me proud as a neighbor and know how much I love this land so dearly. I live closer to the property than anyone else. If I believed there was going to be any negative impacts, I would not be here supporting this project today. It will be a great addition to the neighborhood. They'll get out all those pepper trees that overgrow everything. Jenna Dimitri have followed all guidelines from the county in trying to do the right thing. They only want to build on what currently existed on that property. If John were here today, and we all know that there would be no opposition, please do the right thing and vote yes on this property. I honestly feel that a lot of the things being said is just selfishness from people not wanting something that could be so great. They don't want to share the waterways. They don't want to do a lot of things. But that's, those are all open waters. That's all open land, and people just, they want their privacy. But that's not what Florida is about. Florida is a tourism state. Thank you for your time. Since '03.
Hello. My name is Crystal Minichino, and I'm a fellow traveler to Ozella and friend of the McGratses. I live in Marion County and love being able to enjoy the beauty of Ozella. I've been a witness to the process that Mr. and Mrs. McGratsy have been on to begin Fish Creek Glampground. I believe that they should be given the green light to move forward on this project for 3 reasons. I believe that they have proven that this project will be beneficial to all involved, and the reasons are as follows. They have gone above and beyond, jumping through every legal, environmental, and personal challenge they have been questioned or confronted with. Secondly, one of the reasons they want to open that campground is their love for nature and the environment, and the desire to share that with others while preserving that for those who would otherwise not be blessed with a chance to fully experience Ozella outside of living there. Thirdly, they have already been doing business there, meeting the locals, running the boat ramp, helping locals and tourists to find and clean scallops and to get to know their community, all while preserving, protecting, and helping the community flourish. I have personally watched them rise above every challenge or request for change. They've redone blueprints, spent more money than expected to get standards met, have special testing and surveys done. Every time an argument came up about environmental safety or some sort of legal issue, if there was something that they could do to fix it or change it to meet the challenge, they have done so and proving it and showing proof over and over to all the different things they have done to comply. Secondly, they purchased a property a couple of years ago that was in utter destruction. There was garbage everywhere. The bridge that is on the property wasn't even able to be seen. They had to do so much work just to get the property back to even looking like the natural beauty that Ozella is known for. Would someone who worked that hard to get their area back to a pristine condition be doing that just to destroy the very land they fell in love with and bought the property for? I know that they even had a beehive at one point, because they do care, as much as anybody here, about the land and its needs. They have a heart to offer campers the ability to stay in such a remote location and enjoy the beauty of a remote location like this. I've been able to enjoy it, and it's like no other. Even if you go to the campground down the street, it's still not anything like spending the night in the heart of Ozella. I know they see a beautiful opportunity to share that experience with people who would otherwise not be able to camp in such a beautiful, remote location. Over the last couple of years, I believe it's been clear that the McGratses have put their time, energy, and effort into being part of this community and showing who they really are, and that they want good things for their community. They have already been running a business, helping and working hand-in-hand with tourists and locals, all after restoring the land that they're on. They are already actively doing business and engaging with the community and doing it, meeting every legal and environmental request necessary to do so. So I don't understand why anyone would think that in this new venture that would also, that they would also not carry themselves the exact same way.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Josh Holland, I'm the son of Debbie Sullivan, who used to live out on the property. I've been visiting Ozella for over 2 decades. I retired out of the Army in 2013, and me and my family decided to leave Hawaii and come to Ozella. Yeah, I don't know what I was thinking. Anyways, the destruction of the land is very well-known. You've seen the pictures and everything like that. And, you know, me and my family, we did everything we could to clean it up and to hopefully make something of it. Many people would always come out there at 5 o'clock before John passed. I met almost everybody at that marina in this, in Ozella. If there were anybody and they knew John, they were there. Why people are so against this right now is unbelievable. It's actually tearing Ozella apart, and it really upsets me that people are so against something that is so beautiful for Ozella. You've seen the pictures. They're going to turn this land into something gorgeous, something that no other part of Ozella or Citrus County looks like. So I don't understand why they want to impact and say no. There's other residential septic systems out there. They're far worse than a brand-new state-of-the-art 6,800-gallon septic system. I mean, your residential tanks will probably have more impact than this tank itself, just in my opinion. As a licensed home inspector, I've inspected a lot of those homes out there, and I see it day in and day out. So I don't understand how they can put one system that's state-regulated to be such an environmental impact. Again, Josh, and I hope you vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
My name is Bill Henderson, and I live, my wife and I live at 1482 South Estuary Drive, kind of across the street from Jenna Dimitri. I met Jen when they were out there just looking around, and I've been favorably impressed with both of them. They're honest, good, hard-working Christian people. They're going to do what they say they're going to do with the help of the planning staff and the Planning Commission. They've already bent over backwards to make this work, and it's a very, very positive asset to our community. And I'd like to see you approve it, and I encourage you to do so. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
My name is Harvey Head. I was born in Ozella in 1944. Been here all my life. I remember when we didn't have electricity in Ozella. You used kerosene lanterns and wax candles. We didn't have running water. We had to haul our drinking water from town. It wasn't until into 50s till they got water piped in from way up on 19 to get water. Anyway, Ozella Road was a dirt road. The bridges were made out of wood, Cypress lumber, by the early settlers. Later on, the county came in, they paved the roads, they fixed those bridges, they got concrete bridges. There was no opposition. It was just done. That was part of the growth. We, as Floridians, have growth and prosperity in our guts. We all going to do it. I drive Ozella Road 5 to 6 days a week. I'm always pulling a trailer. The road that goes into the marina down there was not put there for the residents because there was no residents there. That road was put there to accommodate that marina. I watched that marina being built. I remember when Roger Greenham built it. It was a gem. It was a gem, absolute gem, way ahead of its time, right in the middle of nowhere. It was part of prosperity, it was growth. The road was finally completed, all the way down to where Pex is now. They came in and filled in San Dollar Bay and put a causeway all the way across it to accommodate the people that live over on the other island because the only transportation they have was by boat. There was no opposition, it was just done. Life goes on, that's prosperity. This is exactly what Dimitri and Jennifer Margate want to do with the campground, bring it back to what it was 20, 25, 30 years ago and let the people come in and enjoy it. Bring money into this county. People are camping, I'm an RV camper myself, we spend money. You get sales tax, the property tax, the sales tax, the county will grow. I hope you approve this again, we all for it, thank you.
Mr. Head, did you go to elementary school out in Ozzello?
No, ma'am, I did not. My two older sisters, Barbara and Joyce, got to go to school there. The school was discontinued in 1943.
Oh, and you were 44.
And I was born in 44.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah.
For the historical part of it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Bracknell and I own two properties on South Waterbird Point, which are within 400 feet of the proposed glamp ground, which is why I'm here tonight. I stand speaking to you in favor of the Fish Creek project. Jen and Dimitri are hardworking local residents who want to create an honest life for their family, which is rich in love as well as generating knowledge and understanding of our ecosystem. They bought this property with a vision of developing it into something gorgeous to pass down to their own children, but also to share with the area as well. They want to make a positive contribution to grow the local economy, not just through employees, but through what their glampers and campers do. They will go out and they will spend money in the area and that will help. They also want to promote ecotourism that has been high on the agenda. Jen and Dimitri are working to be good stewards of their neighborhood. They have made accommodations and concessions in their plant so that neighbors will not be unduly inconvenienced. All they're asking is to build on what used to be a camping area and I'm hoping you will vote in favor of Fish Creek Glamp Ground. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
I'm Richard Bracknell. I own property at 1763 and 1791 South Waterbird Point. This is within the 400 feet or actually across the canal is the glamp ground. I am very supportive of this project. This is an ideal place to bring a family and we all know those places are not always there. Ecotourism is a major happening here. The glamp ground will only enhance it. That is what actually drew my family here. Please keep in mind that Jennifer has used county staff, engineers and her attorney to ensure that all state and county regulations have and will be met. This is not a giant project, but rather a family owned, local business. It will generate revenue that will stay here. The services offered by this glamp ground will educate the visitors on how to be an ecotourist in an appropriate manner. Finally, I'm a firm believer in land rights, which are being taken away every day. I feel that this is an attack by the opposition on the very right to decide, for Jennifer to decide what her constitution guarantees the right to do, and that's to choose the use of her land as long as she follows the guidelines that have been established by this county. And with that, all of this in mind, please vote yes in favor of this project. You know, protecting land rights and the support of local business is critical for the survival of local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Ken Ellingham. First of all, thank you for the commissioners for taking your time to listen to what we have to say.
It's our job.
Well, you could be working at any job, you chose this one.
That is true.
We appreciate that.
It's not the best job.
It is what you make it, ma'am.
Thank you. Give him back a couple of seconds. Go ahead, sir.
There you go. Yes, ma'am, I am a Citrus County resident and have been for almost 60 years. Spent 25 years in the retail grocery industry as a store manager, 14 years in law enforcement, all the while volunteering, almost 27 years with Fish and Wildlife Commission and also involved in the very first coastal cleanup in Citrus County and currently am continuing to do that. So very much so, I am concerned about the nature of our nature coast and the things that go on, our environment, the impact that we have on that environment and what we can do to improve it. I can tell you, I've seen a lot of changes in Ozzello over the years, some good and some bad. I can attest to that. I used to ride my bicycle after school down to Fish Creek to fish many, many years ago. Used to carry a .22 rifle on my bicycle. Today, you'd get put in jail for it. Back then, it was acceptable. Seen a lot of, a lot of things go on. This particular piece of property that's in question started out as a very, very nice fish camp and area and campground. Over the years, late seventies, early eighties, it turned into a dumping ground. Had some storms come through, wipe it out and pretty much it was abandoned. It was left for a garbage pit, basically, a place to go dump. Lot of illegal activity took place in that particular piece of property after it was abandoned. And then come, you know, Jen and her family trying to improve it and make something of it, trying to promote that ecotourism that you've heard so much about already, which we've got to have. Folks, I know y'all are familiar with it, but a lot of people in this room might not realize if we don't have the tourists, if we don't have the visitors to Citrus County, we cannot function. We cannot survive just by our residents. We've got to have those people. And now we've got somebody willing to put their money front and forward trying to improve that. When those people come to camp at this glamp ground, we're not talking about a $50 Walmart tent, they're going to spend $100 on a weekend, this is a high-end facility. They're going, they're going to shop and spend money in our community.
Thank you, sir.
And that's what we need.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Hess. I live at 4701 North Ash White Terrace in Crystal River. My husband and I moved to Citrus County in 1993 and we moved from Montana and we chose Citrus County because we loved the small atmosphere and we loved the nature. Recently, I'm seeing the land being raped by big organizations to put in what they call their RV parks or their campgrounds. What Jen and Dimitri want to do is put something that is still beautiful. They're not going to tear it down and just plant the necessary trees to accommodate for the ones they tore down. I love to camp, my husband loves to camp, but we don't have an RV. We're too old to sleep in a primitive camp now. We need someplace. We have pets. We would love to go away for a weekend and we want to be able to go back home so I can feed my pet pig, I can feed my pet horse and take care of my dog, but then go back and camp and still get time away from home and go to nice restaurants and eat good food. And I hope that you guys approve this because it would benefit me and my husband very much. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. And if there's anyone in the overflow pro for this project, this application, please come to the chambers.
Hi, my name is Lisa Massey and I live in Homosassa Springs. I support Fish Creek Glamp Ground. This project will be a welcome addition to Ozzello. One thing that attracted me to this area is intertwining of the natural beauty, that, excuse me, let me start over, the intertwining of the natural beauty that the coast offers along the growth that's happening here in the state. Some say they oppose this project because it would destroy a pristine environment. Are they basing this observation off the condition of their own yards? You only need to drive by properties on the way to Fish Creek to observe what's really going on here. Since March of 2021, the property owners of Fish Creek Glamp Ground have painstakingly put blood, sweat and tears as their, well as their time, precious time with their family and their life savings into cleaning up this beloved area of the community. How many opponents can say that? How many of them have offered to assist this couple in cleaning up this property? If they would spend more time in helping to clean up than do the complaining, you can only imagine how beautiful Ozzello could really be. So what's the real goal here? To leave things as they are so we don't have to deal with change? To be in control of that change by spreading hurtful untruths? Or is it to work together as neighbors to build something we can all be proud of and benefit from? While volunteering at Homosassa Springs Wildlife State Park, I'm asked every single week, where can I go camping? Where can I get something to eat? Where can I go kayaking? Every week. I know Fish Creek will be an outstanding opportunity for Citrus County to shine. We have visitors from all over the world and this will offer a local choice for lodging. It will give a chance to immerse themselves responsibly in a beautiful environment. Jen and Dimitri have worked very hard to restore this land to something we can all be proud of. I ask you to vote yes for this well-designed plan.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Philip Lovelt, 20 Jungle Plum Court South. I'm a 22-year veteran, 100% disabled. Dimitri has made it easy for us to fish at Fish Creek. I've been fishing there for many years and it was really not the best. It has been so much better now. I can't crawl over the front of my boat to get in, in the boat anymore. He put a dock right next to the pavilion, which we can, I can, I can get with a rope my boat over to the dock so I can get in. And they've cleaned it up so much and I just can't stress how wonderful it is now. And if that dock wasn't there, my fishing days were over because I can't crawl over my boat anymore, the front of my boat. Thank you very much. And I really know in my heart that Dimitri, Dimitri and his wife and his family are so good people and when they say they're going to do something right, it's going to be done right. I guarantee you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Corinne Sakwitz. I live at 1612 North Foxborough Loop in Crystal River. I've been in the county since 2003. I've had the opportunity to get to know Jen and Dimitri since they moved here. As a member of the Business Women's Alliance in Citrus County, I'm a huge supporter of local women business owners. After reviewing many facts regarding Fish Creek, I believe we should support this local business owner in her endeavor to create a unique ecotourism experience. I believe this project aligns with the county's goals for ecotourism growth. What better way to do so than by offering the newest way to camp, glamp? It will attract new eco-minded visitors, ones that are a little bit more upscale and who will in turn support our community, our shops and restaurants. Jen and Dimitri have tirelessly taken the necessary steps to ensure she is following all county guidelines. Additionally, we know Jen has surpassed any posed requirements and proactively removed excessive amounts of trash, including over 200 tires from her property, which by all accounts was a makeshift dump prior to their ownership. Growth is part of building a community's economy. I support good growth decisions. Fish Creek is a good decision for Citrus County. I support this project and ask that you please vote in favor of Jen and Dimitri and Fish Creek Glamp Ground. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Commissioners, and welcome back, Ruthie, and thank you all for staying late tonight to do your jobs. My name is Artith Prendergast, 6083 West Fairhope Court, Crystal River. I don't have much to say because I think everybody else has said it so eloquently, particularly the 14-year-old, and she was just amazing, but everyone has spoken so much about this from the emotional aspect. And yes, there's a lot of emotion that's tied to it, but I want us to remember too that this is not just all about emotion, this is also about what's right. And from what I've heard tonight, Jen and Dimitri have met the burden of compatibility and consistency and I'd like us to remember that. This is something that can be done, that should be done, it's a good project, let's just do it because it's the right thing to do. We even heard Joanna say that it's not illegal to do what they want to do. This is something we can do. So, what can I say? My feet hurt, I'm going to sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Tracy Wyatt.
Tracy, can you get closer to the mic?
Oh, yes, and I turned in my, okay. My name is Tracy Wyatt at 2160 South Gulfwater Point. My family and I have been a part of Ozzello since 2018 when we bought a second house. We recently sold our main house and sold out of Volusia County to come here and invest in Citrus and to raise our children full-time in Ozzello. The reason why we chose, it is because of the people, all these people, even the opposition. We love them all. I hope all of us in this room can remember that we are neighbors and friends and that we all want the same thing. We want to protect Ozzello. I met Jen and Dimitri, Ellie and Nico, a couple of years ago now. They had purchased the old campground and marina and I came to this committee at that time to possibly acquire the firehouse and turn it into a general store. Jen was amazing. She wanted to support the firehouse and we talked about a collaboration of what all the businesses on Ozzello could do and work together to help the tourism. Of course, that didn't happen. We didn't get the firehouse. But Jen and Dimitri and Ellie and Nico and our relationship has continued. They've hosted several events over there over the years, focusing on family and enjoying the beautiful nature that Ozzello has to offer. I've watched them work as a family, pulling literally the hundreds of tires in the debris out of the property and transforming it. I come from 30 years of travel and tourism experience. I'm very familiar with campgrounds and the moving of logistics for large groups. I have seen something similar established in the Wildlife Corridor in Santa Barbara, California. Glamp grounds are often used as a means to preserve the area while still remaining open to carefully planned tourism. It promotes a unique experience for people to learn about and enjoy the nature and educate the public. the public. The education the republic, the public receives leads to conservation and preservation. This is the image that I hope Ozello would strive for, not just one of the adult fun that we have with our awesome restaurants and our wonderful drive down Ozello Trail that many times people enjoy a little too fast. In my opinion, an RV to slow them down wouldn't be such a bad thing. Ozello can be so much more. This, if you approve this family business, we can watch together to see how such a great family can preserve our way of life and improve it at the same time. I look forward to seeing the future of Fish Creek if you approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Tricia Connor-Mullins. I reside at 14861 West Hideaway Drive in Ozello, on a property that my family has owned since the 60s. I am here in favor of the Fish Creek, Fish Creek Glamp Ground. I grew up coming out to Ozello at a time where there were only a few kids out there. Now, living here full-time with my husband and four children, I'm extremely glad to know families with like-minded principles, that includes, that includes Jen and Dimitri and their wonderful kids, Nico and Ellie. A big part of why we moved here permanently is because of the amount of children that are here now. I have talked in depth with the McGraw-Zay family and have spent a good amount of time getting to know them. I can honestly say they are the kind of family and people we want in Ozello. What they are working so hard to build and create, in my opinion, will create a better environment for the families raising kids on this island. The activities they will offer and help teach our children how to become more self-sufficient, as well as how to respect and protect the parts of our location we all love so much. I would also like to note the fact that before his passing, and I can honestly say he still would, my dad was in support, not just of the idea, but also of this family. I may not know all of the logistics of zoning and code enforcement, but I do know that Jen and Dimitri are not trying to do anything that would go against the county regulations, contrary to some opinions floating around. I will also say, I will say, I also have, I also have some of the same concerns as some of you. Here today, however, spending time with this wonderful, wonderful family, I have learned they all, they would, they want to protect and preserve our beautiful island, as well as create a family-friendly environment. Our island is an ideal location for this glamp ground because of the diverse nature and aquatic life we have out there. It will present an opportunity for learning and education to be implemented and taught in a safe environment. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I truly hope the county approves the glamp ground, not just for the sake of my family and theirs, but also for the numerous families that will be able to enjoy our little piece of paradise that we all love so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is George Passantino with Passantino Anderson Communications, 1 North 4th Street, Fernandina Beach. I'm a consultant for Jen and Dimitri and Fish Creek Glamp Ground. I'm here to strongly support this project. It's clear that folks have, that are here tonight have legitimate concerns that are about their quality of life. I do this stuff all over the country. People don't show up at these things just thinking, what civic fight can they pick next, right? So I understand that there are legitimate concerns, but sometimes those concerns get distorted by false information, and as such, we see quite a bit of it on social media right now. We talk about the RV traffic. It's been brought up repeatedly. Actual RV folks like me are much more comfortable riding on Ozello or estuary or any of those roads over there than on 19 or I-75 or A-1A or I-10 or Highway 98. It's a comfortable, slow-paced road. It's not that difficult. Somebody brought up that the width is too low. Maybe the folks should start meeting their Amazon truck then up at 19 because I suspect that the Amazon truck volume is a little bit higher than the 16 average trips that are split through the course of the peak hours in the morning and the afternoon. There have been concerns about mangrove removal, and in fact, it was brought up earlier. The DEP report that was just released two weeks ago didn't mention removal of mangroves. It talked about altering and trimming, in some cases to three and a half feet. But actually, that report also, just yesterday, they met with DEP, and they recognized that that number in that original report of 1,275 square feet was not accurate. It's being amended to 456, and that's as of a meeting as of yesterday. So that's an area not much larger than this room on a piece of property that's 16 acres, right? If you, it was originally told to be 1,275 square feet, but it's all, it's only 77 linear, linear feet that was trimmed. That was a mistake. They've acknowledged it. They've committed that it wouldn't go past. I don't think there would be the first person in this room that would say they were incorrect in interpreting or following every rule on the book. Listen, there, there are real issues to evaluate here, but I think the significance is that those issues can get distorted and muddied with false information. You've got a staff report that includes conditions of approval. Those conditions of approval are say, if you approve this, this is how we do it, so we can address those issues, issues of the dock. That can be clarified by simply making it motorized, not allowable. So you got a really good deal here. I just encourage you to support it, and I applaud them for doing what they're doing. Eco-tourism is the future, and they're doing a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Josh Wooton, President, CEO of the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce. This opportunity does not come before you very often, to have a project that is so, such a good fit for the nature coasts and ecotourism, but not just that, the quality of the family that has decided to move here to do this property, and they're going to stay here and, and take care of this land. I have become friends with these two. People say, well, you're getting, this is getting personal for you. Yes, it is getting personal for me because I have become friends, and I know the misinformation, things like, you know, chopping down mangroves is now, they trimmed it like a hedge. And, you know, so we can't, we can't treat our neighbors like this. I, the last time I went out to visit Jen last week to talk about this project, she took a break from teaching her kids Latin under a pavilion to take, she said, I'm going to take a break and come meet with you. We're just finishing our Latin class. I haven't even mastered the English language, and she's teaching her children Latin out there on this property. This is the caliber of people that we want in our community. These are not investors that are coming to take all they can out of our community. They're coming to put all they can into our community. I just want to read for the record. I don't know if y'all got the letter from, of us officially supporting this. I'd like to read it in the record. Dear Commissioners, the Government and Affairs Committee of the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce fully supports and urges approval of application, blah, 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 Fish Creek, Fish Creek Campground. We feel that this project is compatible with, I get five minutes, Commissioner Base, compatible.
Stop stuttering.
We feel that this project is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and in fact, anybody that's been out there can attest to this, is less intense than the development in the surrounding area. The 16-acre parcel has been a campground, mobile home park, fish camp, bar, boat ramp, and many other things over the years. A site visit clearly indicates infrastructure, derelict mobile homes, outbuildings, a boat ramp, seawall, walking bridge, RV and park model pads, and foundations of a home and other structures that are out there now. The owners have cleaned up the site and will replace the aging septic systems with one central unit that meets the highest standards. That's not me saying that. DEP is not going to let them put something out there that's going to degrade that special part of Florida, and they've agreed to go above and beyond, just as they have in everything in, in this application. They've agreed to go above and beyond, and I think, I know staff's not supposed to take a position, but I heard you tell the PDC that they have been most cooperative about all of your suggestions and easy to work with. This project, if approved, will be a model for what ecotourism should be on the nature coast. We believe that if the owner is granted permission to proceed, this 16-acre parcel will be more environmentally friendler, friendly and safer than what is currently there. There's no doubt in my mind. It will be something all the citizens of Citrus County can be proud of, and it will be a crown jewel of the nature coast. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in this room or in the overflow that would like to speak in, in favor of this application?
We checked with the overflow chair, and there's nobody over there.
Very good. Is, is the room empty?
No, there's people and opposition.
Oh, okay. Very good. Okay, at this time, we're going to close the pro, and we're going to open for the con against this application. Mr. Strickland, you've been so patient.
No, I'm not near as patient as you folks. Oh, okay. My name is Gene Strickland. I, my home is at 14156 West Seaside Court. I've been an Ozello property owner, had a home for 42 years. There are legitimate concerns regarding this land use application in this low coastal estuary property. It impacts the environment of the St. Martin's Estuary, the wildlife, the water, the roads, the traffic, the Ozello residents, and most importantly, it's going to create a safety hazard for the occupants in, in the campsites. A letter was sent out to property owners in Ozello from the Department of Growth Management, your department, and the letter says your property is in a flood zone and it floods several times. And the letter says that we request that you, that you can take actions to improve it by doing multiple permanent protection measures to improve the safety and your homes and property. It says in the letter, you can elevate your home above flood levels. You can turn off power. You need to install floor drains and overhead sewer backup valves. Check water entry points such as doors and dryer vents. These are the things it says you need to do because you're living in a flood zone. On the back of the page, it says, the same letter states that there may be flood rebates from the county for up to $2,500 to install these protections and to raise utility lines. It also states, if you're interested in elevating your building or selling it to the county, you may apply for a federal reimbursement grant to cover 75% of the cost. This is the letter from the County Growth Management Department. Then you have a staff report, a staff report from the same, same department that says the development property being proposed here is entirely in a flood zone. It also notes numerous deviations to, in compliance with the Land Development Code. And surprisingly, it appears to recommend approval of 68 non-elevated RV and tent pads, pads in a flood-prone property, just the ones we were talking about earlier. The letter to the residents clearly states the risk of living in flood zone, even offers to fund improvements for safety. Yet, the staff report states that this non-compliant application may be approved. You know, the owners do have a right to develop this property, but in compliance with current codes and structural elevation requirements. No new building that's going to be lived in in Ozello will be let on a, on a flat property, property zone. It will be elevated.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time, all of your time today.
Thank you. One moment, please. Commissioner Finnegan.
I'm so sorry. Did, did I hear him correctly? The letter from the county said that the county would buy his property? Did I hear that correctly?
I did hear the same thing.
Okay. I, I thought so.
And I, and Joanna, I also heard, is there a, is there an environmental study saying that this is going to be detrimental to the marsh? Because I didn't read any of that.
I'm formulating a response, Commissioner. I am not aware of the letter that he's responding, that he's talking about. That was not sent out by Land Development, so I'd have to take a look at that and see what he's referencing. There are numerous reports in your packet about environmental concerns or not concerns in the packet. The applicants provided quite a lot of data.
Right. Yeah, I just, I just want to be careful. I just want to be careful if you say, can you please supply some kind of proof to what you're saying? Because I just don't, I don't want that it's going to hurt the environment. I haven't read that. I, I see both ends, but I just want to be very, very careful about that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I feel like, does anyone have anything to say about that? I feel like if we're offering to buy property in Ozello, like we should know that, right?
I would, I would think so.
I, I don't think we're offering to buy property. They're referring to a flood letter that's sent out by the Building Division regarding being in a flood zone. I don't think we're buying property.
Mr. Strickland, if you don't mind supplying that to Joanna.
I just gave the letter to your, to your, to your board.
Thank you, sir.
The letter was sent to me by all and other residents of Ozello.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Yes, I saw you reading it. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Next speaker, please.
My name is Vicki Iozia. I did not expect to be speaking tonight, but Nancy Cost had to leave. I'll be under three minutes. I'm a toast nester.
Thank you.
There's a common saying that we're all familiar with, and that is, history often repeats itself, because often we do not learn from past mistakes. Here in Citrus County, there is one history we do not want to repeat, and that's the pollution of the waters at St. Martin's March Aquatic Preserve. Demise of our waters started some 50 years ago, a result of unbridled development, followed by leaking of nitrates and other pollutants from septic tanks, agriculture, fertilizer, and pavement runoff that changed our God-given, crystal-clear waters into a murky, polluted mess. We've come a long way in repairing that damage, but we still have a long way to go. Countless local, state, and federal agencies and volunteers from organizations like the Homosassa River Alliance, Save Crystal River, one rake at a time, and even schoolchildren have worked tirelessly to restore water quality and seagrasses in our spring-fred rivers, whose tributaries supply the St. Martin's Preserve with fresh water. We should not take any chances on introducing new contamination. It would be tragic for our economy and a slap in the face for all who have worked so hard on restoration. It's unquestionably clear that in order to protect St. Martin's Preserve, we do not place any development on its shores that could cause pollution. A huge, unproven mound septic system is proposed for the subject campground. Septic tanks do fail for a variety of reasons, especially flooding, including mound systems. Do we really want to take any chances of that happening adjacent to our fragile and precious estuary, which FEMA has assigned its highest flood risk category? As an example, please review the handout highlighting the performance of the mound septic systems during the 2021 King Tide Flood alongside a coastal Virginia estuary not unlike Ozello. It includes relevant information on the conundrum of coastal development with climate change as water levels continue to rise. We can and must learn from our past mistakes.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Gary Rinkle, Citrus Hills. Welcome back, Commissioner. Hope the rehab's going well.
I haven't started yet, but thank you.
I manage the Federal Wildlife and Parks Program and know what responsible tourism looks like. I also know how important tourism, tourism is to our area and what it takes to sustain it. This isn't responsible tourism. Representative Musulo's top two priorities are water resources and the environment. You've linked protecting and improving environmental assets to managing smart growth. Approving this application would perpetuate our history of dumb growth. It would open the door to similar projects along all our waterways, leading to further losses of riparian habitat, more leakage from septic systems, elevated nutrient and coliform counts, recurring no swim advisories, spreading invasive plant infestations, and potential shellfish closures, and red tide outbreaks. So much for septic-to-sewer conversion. On the bright side, our business leaders could tout all the new muckraking jobs created. The PDC twice rejected the bizarre PUD ability claims The PDC twice rejected the bizarre PUD comility claims, compatibility claims of a clearly biased staff working hand-in-hand with the developer's attorney who appeared to be shaping county planning policy. Two members bought into them and voted yes. One still would. Your constituents have had to retain legal counsel and spend countless hours in a year-long, yeah, year-long fight over an application that should have been quickly dismissed. They deserve better. Updating the COM Plan and LDC to expressly prohibit septic systems larger than currently allowed in the CL District would ensure we'd never see another application like this. Better yet, expand the conservation area like our state and federal partners have done and provide wider buffer zones. And wider buffer zones. Creating an independent environmental services unit like those in Sarasota, Hillsborough, and Pinellas Counties would ensure that balanced policy guidance is incorporated in our planning documents and adhered to in the review process. Placing a token ecologist in land development or growth management won't provide the degree of environmental awareness you need to make informed decisions and avoid future 7-11s. Fish Creek isn't Meadowcrest, Sugar Mill Woods, or Pine Ridge. It's about, it's not about stopping growth, curtailing development, or preserving neighborhood integrity. It's about retaining what's left of old Florida.
Thank you, sir.
Our quality of life and tourist economy depend on it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Boy, my brain's a little tired. My name is Quentin Sager. I live at 1589 South Wallace Point, Ozella, one street over from Fish Creek. This is a meeting to address a land use zoning change request for an environmentally sensitive Ozella property partially located within a velocity zone within a low-intensity coastal and lakes land use district that abuts the St. Martin's Aquatic Preserve in order to develop an RV park. Supporters of the proposed RV park often refer to the historical development of this property and the mobile home RV park and marina that was there, but not really, as justification for land use zoning change. There's no question, historically, the development of the property did indeed begin in the early 1970s and remnants of the 50-year-old infrastructure exist today. What is not found, however, are engineering and design plans and subsequent county, state, and federal approvals and permits for its development. In 1984, Citrus County did approve a special exception for a recreational vehicle park and marina that was contingent upon the developer obtaining the appropriate state and federal permits, which did not occur, and the plan development designation expired. The reality is that any historical, unlicensed, non-permitted use of the property is irrelevant and should have no bearing on any decision to change its future land use. There are currently 33 state-permitted RV parks in Citrus County. There's one Ozella. Ozella, I'm sorry. This is our home. Our concerns are the well-being for our family, friends, and the Ozella community, not the financial interests of the developer or any party in their quest for commercial growth for growth's sake. Ozella is one of the few vestiges of old Florida and deserves preservation, not development. How many times have we seen development gone wrong only to stand back and ask, how did that happen? When I look at my backyard, I am literally looking at the preserve. I would prefer not to see an RV park. Thank you.
This is you, sir, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you for the information. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jerry Rideout.
Mr. Strickland. I'm sorry, sir. One moment. Mr. Strickland is who supplied us that letter? Yes. Mr. Strickland, you're the one who supplied us with the letter.
No, Mr. Strickland gave you this letter. Mr. Sager gave you this one.
Mr. Strickland.
Mr. Strickland.
Okay. I'm sorry, sir.
Can I have my time back?
Oh, yeah.
Of course.
Do you want a little extra, just for the inconvenience?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jerry Rideout, I live at 1539 South Fish Creek Point, Ozella. We who oppose this development here to shine a light on the old Florida community of Ozella. It's located in the heart of Citrus County Nature Coast. The developer who purchased this land wants to change the zoning. The burden of proof to change existing zoning is much higher than to retain it due to the damage it could inflict on the community. This is certainly the case of Ozella. With Crystal River and Homosasas as its neighbors, it's easy to see what overdevelopment does. While it's still possible to see bits of old Florida, you're forced to overlook big-box stores, hotels, motels, housing developments, RV parks, traffic congestion, and over-commercialization of the valuable shoreline. Twice this project, as noted, has been rejected by the PDC, a group of very dedicated professionals, and their decisions really need to be leaned on heavily. This is what they do. To clarify, a statement made earlier about the land described as vacant, it is on the north and west sides of this parcel. It's the St. Martin's Aquatic Marsh, not vacant land. It's a very sensitive area that I witnessed a video of four of the commissioners discussing sensitive areas such as this and the need to protect it. Now's the time. And the entire parcel is in a flood zone. Our houses have to be 13 feet above the water level. Why does a permanent glamping tent get an exemption from that? It's still a place to live, and it's in a flood zone. Information gathered about Ozella Trail says there is no money for anything other than patches. A recent statement from Commissioner Kennard states that construction of shoulders on Ozella Trail would cost $10 million, meaning the only route to Fish Creek Point will remain substandard and getting worse due to tidal waters, storm surge, and increased traffic load. This project, due to no central sewer, is forced to use a 10,000-gallon sewer tank. If that were to fail, it would be catastrophic, and the national news would be Crystal River Sewer Disaster. Not all publicity is good publicity. Citrus County can easily survive without this park. However, Ozella and the Nature Coast cannot survive this development, and all the others will reuse the precedent it creates. This is a very high-risk, low-reward vote.
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Thanks for your patience. Listening to everybody talk, I think we can all agree.
I need your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Lorena Evans from Ozella.
Thank you.
The location, that seems to be the recurring theme. This location is in the low-intensity coastal land use class, as you all know, and the main emphasis there is preservation and protection as we've talked about the St. Martin's Aquatic Marsh Preserve. This is something else to note. With these aquatic preserves and our springs, they are actually in what is the State of Florida's Outstanding Florida Waters Program. And they then get a certain, I'm gonna have to read it because I wanna get it right. These are certain waters designated worthy of special protection because of their natural attributes. This special designation includes adjacent wetlands and is intended to protect and maintain existing acceptable, not good, but acceptable, quality standards. This is a special area of protections. That's from the State of Florida's website, and I can get that for you if you need it. The land use class, therefore, should not be changed to a less stringent protection. By going to RVP, commercial, you are taking away those very protections that we're just getting busy to enact. We wanna look back and learn from the seabed grass degradation, the red tide south of us. And of course, we're all working really hard to try to go septic-to-sewer so bad. The comprehensive plan should stay as it is. Now, this is not a low-intensity development, no matter what they say, only 68 sites. Even if it's half-full, you're looking at 100 people and their pets at any given time. I actually think it's a pretty good idea, and I would say that this family, the plan, sounds pretty good. I can't disagree that their plans, the ecotourism, all these things, they're great. The issue is, we can't pick up our location and make it safer out of a flood zone. We just can't do it. Good project, wrong location. Now, everyone in Citrus County now is talking about this unprecedented growth. It's happening. We have to get ahead of it. We need to take the lead on the right project at the right location at all times. Now, this is a big deal. Location is key. Changing a pretty stringent land use class to something to allow RVs. And Ms. Albeck, I think you were talking at Sugar Mill Woods about this project sounds good. This developer sounds good. But we all know properties change hands. Things change. These people with their ideals might not be the next owners. And we really need to think long and hard. Zoning changes are forever. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Ms. Evans, I appreciate your energy. Thank you. I don't know where you found the energy right now.
Caffeine, caffeine.
And I would like to take credit for that, but I don't believe it was me.
It's Finnegan, wasn't it?
Yes, I was gonna say. Yes. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's good to see you. My name's Devon Kirillo, and I'd like to request five minutes on behalf of Sierra Club Adventure Coast that represents Citrus and Hernando.
And where do you live, reside?
I live in Brooksville, 222 East Liberty Street in downtown Brooksville.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I did hand out something to y'all, two images that I'm gonna refer to in my presentation today. If you got, oh, thank you so much for sharing those. Okay. Good evening. I'm Devon Kirillo, and I speak on behalf of our more than 2,000 members and supporters in this county and Hernando on behalf of the Sierra Club Adventure Coast Group. We urge you to deny this application on the grounds that it is environmentally inappropriate at this location in the coastal high-hazard area for flooding. We're opposed to the plan to install a single-mounded septic tank plumbed to service a density of 68 new units with multiple occupants each, outbuildings and RVs, plus an RV pump-out facility on land boarding the St. Martin's Marsh Aquatic Preserve. The proposed RV pump-out facility will produce high-strength black water from 20 to 150 gallons per RV per day that contains much higher concentrations of nitrogen and phosphorus than residential wastewater, plus holding tank chemicals that create additional risks for marine life and water quality in the preserve. This plan increases the risk of pollution during severe weather, rising seas, and storm surge. Flooding and rising groundwater has resulted in the overflow of septic systems and the erosion of septic mounds. See my handouts from Wetlands Watch of a mounted septic system on a normal day in coastal Virginia compared to it during a king tide in 2021. This could be the campground. Sunny-day flooding is already happening in Ozella. Such flooding carries bacteria, viruses, and pharmaceuticals into surface and groundwater. Stormwater and wastewater could be driven inland and contaminate freshwater supplies before draining seaward with the tide into Fish Creek and the preserve. The U.S. 2022 Sea Level Rise Technical Report said that, quote, "Sea level rise will create a profound shift in coastal flooding over the next 30 years. By 2050, moderate flooding is expected to occur, on average, more than 10 times as often as it does now," end of quote. Researchers at the University of Central Florida found that, quote, "Sea levels along the southeastern and Gulf Coast already are rising faster than climate models predicted," end of quote. Adrian Tate of High Tide Intelligence, a flood risk data company, added that, quote, "If nobody acts by the end of the century, there are approximately a million buildings that will be inundated in Florida." A 2021 study in your agenda packet by Harbor Branch Oceanographic Institute entitled, quote, "Septic Systems Drive Nutrient Enrichment of Groundwaters and Eutrophication in the Urbanized Indian River Lagoon, Florida", found that rapid urbanization of an area where septic systems represented only 50% of wastewater disposal led to conditions that caused eutrophication, harmful algal blooms, and loss of habitats. A catastrophic loss in seagrasses began in 2017 that by 2020 led to mass mortalities of threatened Florida manatees. They found that, quote, "Groundwater from septic systems is a significant source of nutrient loading to surface waters that drain into the coastal Indian River Lagoon. It's contributing nutrient pollution to surface water via groundwater contamination. This study demonstrates the need to reduce reliance on septic systems in urbanized coastal communities to improve water quality," end of quote. It cited multiple studies that, quote, "Submarine groundwater discharge is a primary mechanism for nutrient and microbial transport to coastal waters," end of quote. And they went on. Globally, sustainable management of human wastewater is an issue that must be addressed. Humans are increasing nitrogen loading at unprecedented rates that now exceed the sustainability of the Earth's vital ecosystems," end of quote. The applicant says they'll comply with regulations on waste treatment, but the decision on where to cite them is yours and will make all the difference. We must face new climate realities here and now in Citrus County. Please protect our world-class aquatic systems that provide biodiversity, quality of life, and economic strength. Deny this application. Allowing this development compromises current restoration efforts along the Nature Coast, including the Florida Resilience Planning, the Tampa Bay Planning Council's 2020 Citrus County Local Mitigation Strategy, FDEP's BMAPs, and the Florida Peril of Flood Act that recommends, quote, "Scenarios or opportunities where inappropriate or unsafe development can be eliminated," end of quote.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
It's always nice to see you.
Great to see you guys. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Eugene Kelly. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Florida Native Plant Society, and I have submitted a form to serve as a formal representative and have five minutes, if you would, please.
Five minutes, please.
Again, my name is Eugene Kelly. I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Florida Native Plant Society. I serve as the Policy and Legislation Chair for the society, and I'm a conservation biologist with over 40 years of experience working in Florida. I'm coming at this whole issue from the perspective of the Native Plant Society's mission, to preserve and conserve the native plants and native plant communities of Florida. And specifically, in this case, our concern is coastal wetlands. Coastal wetland protection has been one of our priorities for a number of years now for the simple fact that they are our first line of defense and our first line of vulnerability when it comes to sea level rise. When I was the Conservation Planner for the Florida Chapter of the Nature Conservancy, I was co-researcher on a project where we wanted to predict what the impact to sea level rise would be on our most important estuaries. And the very first area we looked at was the southern Big Bend coastal Hernando, Citrus, and Levy Counties because of the extreme natural significance of those coastal wetland systems and their economic importance and their vulnerability to sea level rise. We know that Citrus County was blessed with some of the most beautiful, pristine coastal wetlands in the whole United States. They're the basis for our productive fisheries, both recreational and commercial. They support a long list of imperiled wildlife species. We can talk about sea turtles and manatees, maybe less known to a lot of people. We have the Marion's Marsh Wren and a seaside sparrow species, both designated as threatened by the State of Florida that occur nowhere else except in the salt marshes of the Big Bend coastline. When I look at the ability of coastal wetlands to respond to sea level rise, to actually persist, the only way that can happen is if they can migrate inland or upgradient. As the sea level rises, they have to be able to move. The deeper areas of our The deeper areas of our salt marsh today are tomorrow's seagrass beds. They're going to be subtitled. You may be familiar with some of the research that's been done by Dr. Jack Poots. He's a distinguished professor of botany at the University of Florida. He studied Wackasasa Bay. He looked at what we call ghost forests in Wackasasa Bay. If you're not familiar with them, they're acres and acres. If you get some aerial imagery, Google Earth, and you zoom in on Wackasasa Bay, you'll see them. They look like a bunch of mat sticks scattered through the salt marsh. They were coastal forests as recently as the early '90s. And that's the kind of transition that will occur naturally if we allow it to. If we harden our shorelines with development, that is the death knell for our coastal wetlands. They will not be able to reestablish or establish themselves on areas where our development footprint of asphalt and home sites and concrete slabs prevents it. You know, it's not all doom and gloom. I'm pretty confident, actually, that we're going to figure out how to respond intelligently. So is the state of Florida. The governor signed a bill, S.B. 7011, I think it was, that is going to require the Department of Environmental Protection to conduct SLIPs, Sea Level Impact Projection Studies. Anywhere where state funds would be developed, would be spent, in coastal areas. They've also designated over $500 million in this year's budget for resilience projects to study the impacts. Included in that also is another $20 million for local governments like Citrus County to fund their own studies of their sea level rise vulnerability. So we know how to respond intelligently and strategically. I think it's important for Citrus County to start looking at this seriously, to really account for the impacts of sea level rise before we accommodate any more coastal development, especially any development that really represents an increase in intensity.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is John Gattone. I live at 372 Lancaster Street, La Canto. And I'm a member of the Nature Coast Anglers Association. And my concern is, I'm sure these people are nice people, but like they said, the location is not the right spot. Because once they start the construction, you're going to disturb all the wildlife. It may not come back. And the other thing is the sewage. With all the disasters going on in the world today, I witnessed Michael and the destruction of Michael. And that came in at a Category 2 into the Gulf, and it fooled everybody. It went and then it hit directly into Mexico Beach, Panama City Beach. And I went up there because my wife's son lives there. And you can't imagine what that destruction does. And if this hurricane ever came in here, and like they're saying, the water rises and washes those RVs away and takes that sewer tank and puts it into our waters, you're going to have a lot of fishermen angry. And also, also the scallopers also. So if you destroy that, we may never get our fisheries back. So you're going to lose all that revenue in our boating and scallopers and everything like that. So I just hope you consider turning this down.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Karen Estey. On the executive disclosure report from the original, when St. Martian Marsh was started in 1969, because it was the most pristine part of Florida, and it should have its presence throughout and in perpetuity. That was the whole intent of preserving this area. But what's happened over time is, you know, we develop and it has gotten very lax over time. But now we started to strengthen our codes and where we want to put things. And we realize the damages that we've done in the past. And now it's time to really think about the future, not only as people alone, but also what these preserves actually do for us. We cannot duplicate that on land. We actually need these types. Because what happens there goes throughout the entire preserve. It just doesn't stay locally. But also, too, I also went online, and the gentleman is with the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration. And he was the author, this Tom Gardner, he was the executive director of the Management Plan. And his one thing is, is to keep this area with low-impact sustainable opportunities. So what this application is really doing is they're asking you, it's a land use application, and that's all. They can't come to you and say, "We want economic development, approve it. We want ecotourism, approve it." They have to change the land use in order to do that. And that's not something that would be sustainable. It's not something that would be compatible with the land. And it's something that would be destroy everything for a very long time. So I'm just asking you to reconsider what you're actually approving. You're not approving, you know, being friends with anybody or anything like that. It's just what land use provides and what's going to be sustainable, not just for today, but for your kids and other generations to come. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Estey. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. Teresa Waldron, La Canto. And I have a statement from Lynn Donaldson Wright, Professor Emeritus at Virginia Institute of Marine Science of William &amp; Mary. And he's asking, I'm not going to read it because it's repetitive, but he is asking through his research to deny this. Due to the destruction of the Cat 3 hurricane would totally devastate the suspected septic tank to be installed. And among that, I was looking at the plans, and there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of detail. There might be. I'm sure there is in the design. But do the glamp tents each have their own private toilet? Is there going to be a public restroom for the entire property? Do the native campers out on the little island get up at 3:00 in the morning, walk over the bridge, and go to said public restroom? Or does a native camper go out in the woods? And that is going to be right by the marsh? I think of the little things in life, and they all add up. And we, as a county, are trying to protect what we have. This is simply one small little peg in protecting our environment and our entire county. So, great idea, wrong location. But I think more investigation into the actual design of where people are going to be going natural. And I think that's very important. Thank you.
I'd hope those campers aren't going to go native. But that is a good question. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Louise Easty, and I have property on 1510 South Wallace Point. We are the corner property right over the bridge. We're looking actually to get ready to build there. And we're going to be affected by this. We're RVers, by the way. We have a 34-foot fifth-wheel, 20-foot truck. We never bring our RV to our property because there is no room. And our property, we're going to be affected by, on a daily basis, will become a roadway. I don't know if you've all been over that single-lane bridge that comes to Bear Creek before Fish Point. You should take a drive there.
I think we've all been there.
And it's not Amazon delivery trucks. You're talking about basically semis that are coming through. It's a great idea, like everybody said, wrong location. But we will be impacted on that corner property on a daily basis with RVs coming through. It's not boats, very different setup. And again, it's not plumbed. Our property floods on it all the time with the new moon. Mary sends us photos with the high tides and all that. It's a flood zone. And it's not plumbed. It's going to seep out into an area that's not sitting on a river where you've got flow and go. It sits and stagnates that water up there. Thank you very much.
And your building, you said. Have you started? And you will have to get a septic tank.
Yeah. We'll have to get, and we have to go 16 feet up in the air.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I mean, that's what we're going to have to do.
I just wanted that for the public record. So, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jane Vanderburg, and I live at 1803 South Waterbird Point in Ozello. And I'm here tonight not with my granddaughter, whose birthday is today. She turns four today. And instead of having a bean with her and blowing out her candles, I'm here because I want her, as a four-year-old, to enjoy the Nature Coast and the preserve and the clean waters and the fish and the manatees. So that's why I'm here tonight. But I am here also to share some comments from Bobby Roscoe, a retired architect and previous member of a Connecticut planning board who reviewed all the documents that you have in front of you. And I know you have a lot of documents there. So I did hand out, you can have a copy of it as I go along. So, he looks at all of that information, and he says he feels like, in his words, that they threw everything, including the kitchen sink, against the wall to see what would stick. Specifically, he finds fault with the plan in the following ways. He sees that there are no details for truck-trailer parking spaces for boaters who will be wanting to continue to use the boat ramp. A typical movement plan for those vehicles is not in the diagrams.
Ma'am, could you stop her time for a minute? Who is he again? I'm sorry.
Okay. His name is Bobby Roscoe. He's an architect. And he looked at, he has, he was, he had been on a planning board in Connecticut. He is a, he was born in Citrus County, and he reviewed the plans.
Okay.
Okay. Regarding the glamp tents, multiple tents are shown in the plans, but they do not consistently apply the analysis of disassembly to any particular tent. The tents are on some sort of wood platforms. No structural foundations that could resist tides flooding the property are shown, let alone wave or storm surge action, as is expected in this flood-prone location during even a Category 1 hurricane. Accordingly, one could expect the decks to float off or break from their footings and be carried great distances. Actually, information on the foundations for the decks is absent in their plan. It is unclear if the existing pavilion is to be reused. The 13-foot-above mean tide will have to be adhered to for a new pavilion, as well as any bathroom facilities. The DRAs shown indicate excavation down 5 to 6 feet below grade. You can expect those to be the full excavation. This area has underlying rock progeological maps. So without borings and percolation tests, it is impossible to understand if they are feasible. He goes on to look at the fact that there are Airbnbs in Ozello, but that would be one single home with people that would normally reside there. So the intensity is not, is, the project will do the opposite of bringing in numerous visitors. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're saying, I'm sorry, but, and it's getting late, but you're saying Airbnb is the same as the one family? That's a constant flow of people.
Yes, but it'd be like one family living there at one time. Yeah.
Okay. I'm sure. Yes.
Commissioners, I just encourage you to just accept the testimony and evidence that's being presented, and you give it the weight that it's due based on the credibility of the witnesses.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan.
We were just handed something else. Can we know where this came from?
It was from that woman, from the architect.
Oh.
I can tell you a little bit about Bobby Roscoe.
Can, if you could just allow me, sir. So, we have received just since I've been sitting here all this information. So if I'm expected to look at this, which one thing I asked for, thank you, sir. I wanted to see that. But, I mean, we're going to need a break. But I don't, I don't know if this is, that's why I need to know if this is from staff or attorneys, or we're supposed to look at this. I feel like if they're coming up to speaking and then just giving us information, it's late for that.
Everything that you've been given is late, and it is from the speakers. Mr., it says, Mr. Wade?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Wade, it is 9:00. I was going to stop to take, I have to take a recess.
Excellent.
And you're going to be next, but if the board is okay with that. I do want to address this letter here.
Same.
Okay. I'll let you do it. Thank you. So we're going to take a 10-minute recess, please. And please remember you're placed in line. Thank you.
All right. I'll leave my stuff right here. If anybody comes and gets it, I'll be unhappy.
Nobody will touch it. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Everybody's here? Mr. Wade?
Yes, thank you.
Three minutes?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Wade. My address is 10857 South Running Deer Point in Bernice, Florida. And as you know, I sit on the CAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Citrus-Hernando Metropolitan Planning Organization. Road use, maintenance, and especially safety is of great concern to me. That's why I volunteered for the CAC position. I have driven to the proposed site up to the gate, and thus I do have some experience, at least driving on the roads, to get there to the site. I was in a full-size pickup truck, so I wasn't in a huge vehicle, just a full-size pickup truck. From U.S. 19, you drive approximately seven miles on the Ozella Trail, which is listed as a minor collector, which is a narrow-winding two-lane road with many slow-speed curves, which are marked by flashing signals that flash when you're going too fast around the slow-speed curves. By the way, some of those were not working that particular day. Ozella Trail is rated by the county road system, or road department, as a Level 6. And they rated it that for its condition in February 2021, which means that the road is definitely in need of repair. The cost of repair from Ozella Trail for crumbling shoulders, as stated by County Commissioner Jeff Kennard, could be as much as $10 billion. This alone tells you that Ozella Trail is not a safe road. Once you turn off of Ozella Trail, you drive into a very narrow set of neighborhood residential roads, including Fresh Creek Point, Estuary, and Bear Creek. These roads also are in need of repair and do not meet present Citrus County standards. Some sections are as narrow as 17 feet. It is not, it is unknown what the cost to bring these roads up to present code. But at a PDC meeting on May 18, 2023, Mr. Josh Rooton estimated the cost, up to $800,000 a mile. That's a lot of money. When you drive on these residential roads, you soon learn that on some of the very tight curves, it would be hard to go faster than 10 or 15 miles an hour around the curves, or even that much. Can you just see two large RVs pulling cars, pulling cars going in opposite directions?
Your time is up, Mr. Wade.
Wow.
It went fast.
Please reject this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hello, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Peter Van Edberg. I've had a property in Ozello for 32 years, and I'm just not too far from the Glantra. I have a PhD in medical microbiology and immunology, and I'm a retired faculty from the University of South Florida. and I'm a retired faculty from the University of South Florida. At the second PDC meeting in May 2023, we were presented with the data that the campground was gonna have a 10,000-gallon septic tank with a 16,582-square-foot mounded field. Tonight, Mr. Stillwell said it was 6,800 gallons. I don't know. So, as you know about septic tanks, waste flows into the tank. It usually has two chambers. It goes into a field. It's on a mounded field. The mound is made out of sand that acts as a filter. And basically, that's what the system resolves upon. The purpose of the sand is to remove pathogenic bacteria and viruses. We don't talk much about the viruses, but those are things like polio, hepatitis, and now COVID. They look for COVID in wastewater for outbreaks, okay? You wanna reduce the load of organic carbon and nitrogen, because nitrogen is detrimental. It encourages the growth of red tide and things like that. Also in that wastewater are pharmaceuticals, okay? Such as drugs that people take. They're in excess, they come out in feces, urine. Okay, so now they're accumulating in fish, okay? You know where the campground is, okay? If you calculate the average waste flow, based on Florida Department of Health tables, if you assume two people per campsite and 100% occupancy, they're generating 6,000 to 8,000 gallons of wastewater a day, okay? What happens is, there's something called hydraulic overloading, where the material starts to flow, and it's not getting degraded. So you're pushing that out. What happens is, it starts to leak out of the field, okay? What happens? You need emergency pumpouts, okay? The other thing this unit's gonna have is a dump station. 1,000-gallon tank in the floodplain directly. It has concentrated human waste, but it also has deodorizers, which contain formaldehyde, okay? That's in those kinds of compounds that cut down on the odor. It's a carcinogen. You know where the campground is? In March 13, 1993, I saw what it did to my mounded system, okay? It tore off the whole western edge of my septic field that was mounted. That was from the no-name storm. These types of things lead to closures of beaches, springs. Our oysters can't be harvested. It could do the same thing to our scallops.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mr. Stillwell, did you lose your chair?
That's okay, I'll get it.
I'm sorry, I had vertigo, I had to sit down. So I have a brain-break message. My name is Diane Steiden. I live in Homosassa, Florida. I am a fifth-generation Floridian. I was born in Miami, Florida, and 76 years ago. I lived 20 years in Yankee Town. I moved after my husband died to Volusia. I moved back to Homosassa. Can't afford to live in Yankee Town anymore. Anyway, we traveled all over the US in our RV. Carlsbad, Branson, the Catskills, all over. We also took our boat from Yankee Town to Albany. So I'm a traveler. I know about RVs. I know about septic tanks. I know about all that, well, I don't really know about septic tanks. But anyway, I had a Toastmaster, because I have that experience, Worthy Talk ready. I threw it away after I listened very carefully to the prose. And then I said to Jen, you know, I'm from Miami, and I would hate to think that if this is not approved, that somebody five or six years from now will come in and try to do it again, but not as eloquently as you're doing. Then I sat here, and I wrote out my notes, and I thought, but you know what? Here are my arguments against it. First of all, tourism is for rich people. Rich people are gonna come to Citrus County, and the costs are gonna rise, in restaurants and blah, blah, blah. I don't know where else, but that was one thought I have. The locals, those of us who are poor folks, are gonna have to pay more for that. But that's just one thought. Whether it's valid or not, I don't know. Another thought is that I've been to Belize. I've actually spent days in a real eco-tourism place, in the forest, in the jungle, blah, blah, blah. An RV park is not an eco campground. You've got traffic, you've got garbage, you've got people, you've got all kinds of stuff going on. Hundreds of people, all the things these scientists have talks about. So I think you have a great idea, but you might not make as much money. But maybe you can just make a glamp ground out of it, because you'll have eternal rewards for saving earth.
And you deserve Clark's seat, so take it back.
I can't, I gotta go. That's why I gotta head in line, so thank you.
Thank you.
I can't stand up anymore.
Thank you, be careful. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Kim Dinkins. I'm the Senior Conservation Associate for Save the Manatee Club, but I'm only gonna ask for three minutes, because it is late. And I am, our offices are in Longwood, but I have a place in Crystal River.
Did we go to the FWC together in Tallahassee? Were you there?
I was there, but I don't think we spoke together. It's okay. I just wanted to kind of reiterate some things that have already been said, and that this is a good project in the wrong place, and that RVs don't really have a place in ecotourism, like the previous speaker said. Changing the land use amendment here, as Ms. Kato pointed out, the coastal lakes and rivers element prohibit, doesn't prohibit RVs. So there could potentially be some options for a commercial-type activity here. We have the boat ramp that's already authorized. So we're not trying to take away any land uses, land use rights here necessarily, but to be responsible in the way that the land is developed and then used. Changing that future land use designation isn't gonna change the location of the land. It's still going to be prone to flooding. It's still going to be surrounded by sensitive lands, and it's still going to have soils that are unsuitable for septic tanks. Under no scenario will this enhanced septic system treat the septicage to central sewer standards. So even though it's allowed, it is not going to be as effective as your central sewer would be. I'm also concerned about those natural campers, because when I get tired at night and I'm camping, I know that it's quite often, not that I would ever do that, but it is tempting to not go all the way to the facilities. So we're gonna have, there are 20 sites like that on pretty, a pretty concentrated area in the sensitive lands. We have dog parks, again, concerns about pathogens and nutrients that my, the previous speaker spoke about, so that's a real concern. And then obviously, from a manatee perspective, there are no real protections for manatees here. We know that we're seeing increased harassment for manatees and increased boater conflicts. So it's a concern all over the state, but particularly in this area, where we are seeing so many new folks coming to look at, to see and interact with manatees. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Oh, ma'am? You turning your green card? Here you go. Deputy Clerk?
Good evening.
Hello.
My name's Dan DeVilles. I live in Ozella at 2250 South Silver Sand Point. I have personal accounts of high-water events and flooding. I was there for the no-name and Hermine. High-water events are becoming more frequent, as you've heard from other people about sea level rise. On 4/30, we had one, the road was flooded. Then again on June 16 and on June 20. Ozella, and every day, we have to know, I feel I have to know what the moon phase is and tides, as it affects my daily life. Just six miles up the road from there, at the beginning of the road in Tropic Terrace, they've built homes right on the ground. Adjacent to this property, which is the furthest west piece of property in Citrus County that's buildable, they have to be 14 feet off the ground. No exception. On 4/30, when that high-water event, I watched vehicles coming from the restaurant and the boat ramp drive through at least 14 inches of water. Please don't think that these people can evacuate this campground in the event of a high-water event or a storm. These folks couldn't leave the restaurant, like I say, in time. Ozella is a very special place. In early April, we had a tree go down up in the first two miles there. Nothing moved for about 45 minutes, until somebody called, somebody in Ozella, they come out with a chainsaw, cut it up, two guys pulled it off the road that live out there. And two weeks later, the county had not come and got the tree. I called them, and I said, hey, there's a, this tree is two foot off the road. They said, we never knew nothing about it. I said, we took care of it. So in Ozella, we don't call the county, we call a friend. Please deny this. I think these are wonderful people. It's just the wrong location. Build homes there, we welcome new neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Doyle.
Thank you, Nancy.
And I live in Pine Ridge, about two miles from the golf course. So I was a geodesist with NOAA for over 30 years, and that included identifying insecure and threatened locations along our coasts. Current flood maps, based on history, as well as other more complete coastal maps, that use more current climate change modeling and private data, all show Ozella seriously endangered by flooding. In 2003, Hurricane Isabel forced the ocean to cut right through the two-lane road that leads to Hatteras on the Outer Banks. Dare County, well-known as home of the Wright Brothers, quickly banned building and restoration of houses between the coastal road and the ocean. A good example of acting to protect future hurricane damage to their people, their roads, and their properties. This month is the 30th anniversary of Hurricane Andrew, well-known for being the ninth-largest hurricane to hit the US, with over 100 million, sorry, 1 million people in South Florida evacuated and 44 dead. The recent fire at Maui killed over 100 people, because they had no way to escape the fire. They were trapped by its two-lane road. Over 800 are still missing. My next one was the same thing that John Wade said about the 10 million, so I'll skip it. Protecting the site from storms and hurricanes, whose paths change unexpectedly and approach this flood zone rapidly, is unlikely to succeed, especially with so much to shut down in this proposed site. The county recognized the challenges of evacuation when we had the last storm come through here, and all the people evacuated on 19. This county was intelligent and recognized it and widened 19. Thank you. But again, you have to look forward and not depend on history, even those outdated 10- or 100-year flood forecasts. They're just not accurate anymore. Crystal River is already being funded to remove the current coastal septic tanks. We don't need another 10,000 tank on the water. I will quote a septic tank expert that expects tanks to last an average of 20 years. Concrete septic tanks will naturally corrode and wear down over time. Plastic tanks, much like holding tanks, can crack. Steel septic tanks can rust. Concrete ones will naturally corrode. And that's all without the flooding we're gonna expect. Last week, 16 young payments successfully sued the state of Montana for violation of their constitutional right to a clean and healthy environment. I hope we do that for our kids. As Bruce Lee said, mistakes are always forgivable if one has the courage to admit them. Please avoid the mistake of rezoning the site.
Thank you. Next, next speaker.
Hi, Betsy Schwartz.
Hi, Betsy.
Glad to see you back.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying late. And I just wanna say, so many people had so many valid points on both sides, for and against. Yes, it's a wonderful idea, bad, bad, bad location. But I think about history and how we can learn from history, absolutely, but the foresight for the future and what we're all facing, and not just in Citrus County, but worldwide. So the flooding is not gonna get any better. And building, I think building anything on the shoreline right now is, I call it insanity. I don't know, I hadn't seen what it looked like, so we took a ride on Sunday to check out what we were looking at. And as we're going down the road, it's like, no, the road's not too bad. And then a couple miles in, yeah, it's just like all the other roads in the county. It's really in need of repair. And as we got further in and into the neighborhood, we thought, wow, I can't believe this is even a consideration. And we talked to some neighbors, and they gave us a little, you know, idea on what was, what had been going on, more than I knew. So a question, a couple of questions I have, because everybody has stated so many amazing things, is just because we can do something, does it mean we should do it? I remember in a marketing class that I took, and that was a question. You know, you can do all these things, because, you know, it's fun and, you know, it's a great idea, but it doesn't mean you should do it. And with this unprecedented growth, we need to manage it. And, you know, we can't just say no. Remember the drug campaign in the 80s? Just say no? Well, that is a possibility, it's a real possibility. And I'm encouraging you to say no. And I also am so glad that a few people brought up the tent campers and where they were gonna go to the bathroom, because that was one of my questions. I have been a tent camper in the past, and I can tell you, I have gone outside in nature. I'm not gonna lie. But really, it's on an island, I think, where they wanna put all those campers. So it's a great question. And I'm glad it was raised before me, and I raise it again. So thank you, and please say no.
Thank you, Betsy, and this is why I don't camp. Can you make sure the man, the last man in the line behaves, please?
Yeah, three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your fortitude. My name's Robin Orlandi. I live in Dunellen, and I kayak at Ozella. I urge you to follow the recommendations of the PDC and deny this application. Part of the applicant's argument revolves around events 50 years ago as reason for being allowed to resume similar activities now, despite the damage done to the site by illegal dredging and wetland development, and despite climate change in the years since the place Ozella in the highest FEMA peril of flood category. State and federal agencies concerned with coastal management in an era of climate change emphasize that assumptions based on past practices no longer represent reliable strategies for managing growth in vulnerable coastal communities. Pro-business, resilient Florida guidelines encourage new businesses to locate away from coastal high-hazard zones, rather than ignore risks likely to prove uninsurable and financially destructive over the next 20 years. It's not a good business decision. Citrus County is currently upgrading wastewater treatment facilities and removing septic tanks to improve water quality. What sense does it make, then, to approve the equivalent of up to 10 residential septic units at this location adjacent to both an aquatic preserve and a basin management area for the springs? The applicant repeatedly claims to support ecotourism, but the principles aren't well-reflected in the plan. Introducing the risk of a 6,000 to 10,000-gallon sewage release into fragile ecosystems violates the first principle of ecotourism. Do no harm. Protect the environment first above all else in your planning. Second principle of ecotourism, sustainability. Preserve the environment you work in and partner with qualified conservation groups to make positive differences. Seagrass depends on clean, clear water to thrive. Take the seagrasses out, and you take out manatees and bay scallops, as well as habitat for countless food and sport fish species that are the economic lifeblood of our coast. Commercial activity at Fish Creek will generate both increased vehicle and boating traffic, as well as runoff and other pollution that negatively impacts water quality. Prop loss erosion and collisions tear up seagrass and churn silt into the water column, degrading habitat, and choking filter feeders like bay scallops and oysters. Fish Creek is surrounded by shallow channels winding through the conservation marshlands of St. Martin's. They should not be further opened up to motorized vessel traffic. Do no harm. The application includes letters from marketing partners, but not from environmental organizations or the obvious partner of scientists and managers at St. Martin's Marsh.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
I have to take my glasses off to read. My name is Mary Whitehead, and I live at 1631 South Fish Creek Point, and I've lived there for over 30 years. I had a totally different speech that I was going to make tonight, but I promised Dick Urban, who is not able to be here, that I would read a little bit of his speech. And this is it. I would like to use some comparisons to put in better perspective some of the problems already identified regarding the inadequate access roads. Most RVs are eight and a half feet wide plus mirrors, and many are over 60 feet long, the same size as a tractor-trailer truck. It is impossible for these vehicles to negotiate the curves from the mainland to the campground, especially in the residential neighborhoods, without crossing onto the oncoming lane of traffic. And at least in one location, traveling completely into the oncoming lane and onto the oncoming gutter will be required. Over 19 feet of roadway is required for two RVs to pass with only one inch of clearance between them. However, the residential roads are frequently not that wide and in places less than 17 feet wide. I did my duty to Dick Urban. Now, welcome back.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
How you vote today will be a decision that will be long-lasting for Citrus County. Today, you will either deny or approve this application. No matter how you vote, some people will leave this chamber unhappy and some people will leave happy. Whatever your decision, whether to deny or approve, will you be happy with your commitment? Maybe not today. Maybe not in five years or 10 years. But that day will come, where you will know with pride that you did the right thing for the citizens of Citrus County. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I knocked that off. Sorry. Hi, my name is Cindy Hosh. I'm a 14-year Ozello resident, 2181 South Seaport Point. The word ecotourism has been tossed around a lot tonight. The dictionary defines that as tourism directed toward often threatened natural environments intended to support conservation efforts and observe wildlife without degrading the actual area. Ecotourism is a type of nature-based tourism that emphasizes reducing or eliminating your environmental impact. It is a form of tourism involving traveling to natural, to natural areas and then conserving the environment that you're in. Its purpose is to educate the traveler or maybe even provide conservation, ecological funding that might benefit the local community. Since 1980, ecotourism has been considered a critical endeavor by most environmentalists so that future generations may, may enjoy, like, the nature coast. Now we're speaking of Ozello. It's a small piece of old Florida here in Citrus County. The Fish Creek Plan fails to honor some of the principles I just mentioned. Calling it ecotourism doesn't make it ecotourism. This is sort of greenwashing the development, which is totally inappropriate for the wetlands, the protected wetlands around it. Instead of promoting the health and conservation of the natural environment, the proposed development may actually degrade it. They're saying it's low-impact. I don't think it is. 60 sites for camping and RVs, there'll probably be an office, storage buildings, a pavilion, parking lots, parking places for the RVs that have runoff, in-ground swimming pools, bathhouses, restrooms, large septic tanks. This is not a low-impact endeavor. I think that they, we need to be responsible for our environment. We live here. This is what makes nature coast so special and why people come here. We don't want to destroy why people come here or why we live here. We have a chance to be in front of something, to not go around and try to fix it after it's been destroyed. So I think you need to vote no on this. It's a wonderful project. These are wonderful people. But it's not the right place, and we need to protect what we have and love. Otherwise, we don't want to take the nature out of the nature coast. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Michael Mello, and I live at 4939 One Eataway South St. Petersburg. I am a property owner in Ozello. I would like to use some numbers to put in better perspective some of the problems already identified concerning the zoning change for a campground in Ozello. Regarding the inadequate access roads, most RVs are eight and a half feet wide, park models are 14 feet wide and 40 feet, 44 feet long on a single chassis, the exact same size as a tractor-trailer truck. These models are allowed in RV parks under LDC 18204. It is impossible for these vehicles to negotiate the curves from the mainland to the proposed campground, especially in the residential neighborhoods, without crossing into oncoming lane of traffic and in at least one location, traveling completely across the oncoming lane into the gutter. Over 19 feet of roadway is required for two RVs to pass with one, with only one inch of clearance. However, the roads are typically not that wide, and in some places, they are less than 17 feet. If this proposal was for a trucking terminal instead of a campground, it would be very obvious that the vehicles are simply too big to fit on the existing roads. Although RVs do not appear as massive as tractor-trailers, in reality, many are the exact same size. So the problem remains the same, whether the proposal, the proposal would be to generate significant traffic, significant traffic by RVs or tractor-trailers on these narrow roads with tight curves. The bigger problem is the sewage. At less than full capacity, the campground would generate about 6,000 gallons of sewage per day in over a reasonable 30-year lifespan, over 65 million gallons, 300,000 tons, or about 68,000 tractor tanker trucks full of sewage, a solid line of trucks stretching from Ozello to Virginia. The campground will have dozens of sewage inputs at ground level, which will be flooded repeatedly. Seawater will flow into the system and sewage will flow out. No private septic system for this type of use and location has ever been designed, built, and successfully tested over time to guarantee with 100% certainty that none of the 65 million gallons of sewage generated by the campground will ever be discharged into the nature preserve. Realistically, sewage discharges will spill into the adjacent waterways. A pristine aquatic preserve is not the place to experiment with an untested and unproven sewage system. Approval of this zoning change will amount to no less than an undated death sentence for thousands of species of aquatic life and the degradation of the water quality. This is our responsibility to protect and preserve. The land in question can be profitably and reasonably developed per the current zoning regulations.
Thank you, sir.
The proposed, the proposed, oh.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
As you can see by the number of people showing up today, and with each issue concerning development and our delicate nature coast.
What is your name, sir?
Stephen Schwartz.
I knew you would be trouble.
Of course, why not? Do I get my time back for asking the question?
And where do you live? No, where do you live?
I live in, I live in Pine Ridge.
Thank you.
Every district to see if their representative is voting in their best interest. In a recent survey, 55% want to stop the construction and 5% never thought about it. I previously mentioned issues about our ecosystem and how delicate they are to human survival, the animal kingdom, and our way of life on the nature coast. If you moved here, it was probably for the nature and the open spaces. If an RV park with a high-capacity septic tank is placed in an area that floods even when there are no storms and with a conservation area close by, how much will be spilled into the rivers affecting the drinking water and all the animals that swim in it, like the dolphins and the manatee? How will the bacteria affect scallop season and the beaches? Even the best septic tank have flaws, deterioration, and potential cracking from shifting soil, especially in a flood zone. What about the connector pipes? Will the combination of high tide, rain, winds, and gravitational pull from a full moon create the perfect storm even without a hurricane? How many more mangroves, trees will be cut behind closed gates, especially since Citrus County's policy is reactive as opposed to proactive and residents can't observe since they are trespass? What about other biological chemicals that will be used? Will RVs, buses, and homes be raised similar to homes required to be on stilts in a flood zone? The roads are not wide enough for two RVs passing in opposite directions or turns, turn around if from flooding they can't go any further. Road money used for correcting the approximately seven miles could be spent on already dilapidated roads, some not paved since 1973. What about the additional people needing to be rescued from the flooding? We are already short essential rescue personnel, including about 80 sheriffs. Why am I paying 12 cents tax for tourism when I see the destruction of open spaces and the ecosystem that will eventually destroy the tourism and the kayaks? Newton's Third Law states that for every action in nature, there is an equal and opposite action. Taking out established trees and putting in more concrete will cause worse droughts, higher temperatures, and worse flooding. For all the reasons mentioned by all the residents from every district in this county, I ask you to save the nature coast and the waterways and vote no.
Thank you, Steve. Next speaker, please.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Maxine Connor, Nine Boralia Court, Home of Sasa. I'm offering documented facts with links regarding environmental concerns and a couple of opinions so noted. Central sewer is not available. I'm concerned about the amount of sewage to go into a septic system for 68 campsites in a flood zone in a coastal wetland estuary. The property is in an environmentally sensitive area. In the LDC, St. Martin's is conservation land, publicly owned lands, having management objectives to promote protection and conservation of sensitive land, water, and other natural resources. The Nature Coast Aquatic Preserve borders the St. Martin's Marsh and is an outstanding Florida waterway. It's the intent of the legislature that the Nature Coast Aquatic Preserve be preserved in an essentially natural condition so that its biological and aesthetic values may endure for the enjoyment of future generations. The property is in the area where Swift Mud states the mixing of freshwater and saltwater creates estuaries, which serve as nurseries for fish and shellfish and other animals. If the water's polluted or if there's not enough freshwater, young and fragile fish and animals such as shrimp, oysters, and crabs will not survive there. These things support our local economy. On the FDEP website, there's a current interactive map, and it's called Impaired Waters TMDLs and Basin Management Action Plans Interactive Map. It was modified July 11th of this year. If you click on the waters around where the, the site is here, it shows, it, it shows what, what they say, waters not attaining standards. The area is shown as an estuary that is already impaired for fecal coliform bacteria because the shellfish harvesting classification is not fully approved by the shellfish harvest area classification program of the Department of Agriculture. The property is not in the Beemap area, but in some, it is some distance west of the Crystal River Kings Bay Beemap, which plan exists to restore water quality because FDEP declared those waters impaired by excess nitrogen. The Beemap shows that septic systems represent 42% of total nitrogen loading to groundwater there. Recently, Fort Island Trio Beach was closed due to contamination and is now reopened. Recent Florida state legislation prohibits new onsite septic systems within a Beemap where sewer is available. Opinion: RV parks should be constructed in areas connected to a regional sewer system with a wastewater treatment plant, especially in environmentally sensitive coastal areas. Please follow the PDC's recommendation and deny this land use change. This, this, if you approve it, it'll set a precedent and there'll be more RV parks on the coast. Thank you.
Thank you, Maxine. Next speaker, please.
Are you going to speak? Who doesn't love a visual aid? PJ Offhammer, Citrus County. I'm the last speaker. Yay! And I have also changed my, my, my talk. I'm going to go over some of Clark's comments. And so it's pick-on-Clark time. I'd like to make some comments on some of the competent evidence that he has given you that actually isn't. Number one, the putt is dead. It's been dead. It is no more. It is not pining for the fjords. It is true and loaded dead. We do not have to approve this request to start this putt up again. It does not fit the comp plan without substantial deviations, which, a number of which have not been discussed in depth, that are, on effect on the environment. I'm going to go for those. I'd like to talk about, to you about Clark's numbers. His numbers on evacuation, his numbers on septic, his numbers on residential traffic. All of them are wrong. He based it on, on the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council study that was started after Hurricane Irma in 2017, using data from 2015. And then he extrapolated using residential information to compare commercial traffic. Doesn't work. And if you don't believe me, I would encourage you to go to the Crystal River meeting back in, in January, when Commissioner Guy and Commissioner Ken Brown tore him a new one about his information being wrong. So it's not just me. We have missed the fact that this building is a zero-setback building, and they are, they are proposing to have a new pavilion built there on a zero-setback footprint. That's not allowed in the code. The hurricane, the, the glamp tents are permanent structures. They're not temporary. We were all led to believe they were temporary. The wind, the wind standards for only the tarp covers will fail, per their submitted information, will fail at 83 miles an hour. As a Miami native, that's just a tropical breeze. Um, let's see. I got lots.
You have 21 seconds.
25-foot wetback is not allowed. It's on a wetland, setback on, on a wetland, where the, where the tent campers are going to be peeing on the ground. And it also is in the path from the septic area, which by state requirement has to be 100 feet. Wetlands are a water body. It doesn't meet that criteria. There are so many things here that were not covered tonight that I wish I had more time to, but, you know, he gets an hour and a half, I get three minutes.
And PJ, where do you live?
I live, um, Incorporated.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Going once? Going twice? Sold. Thank you. And I just, I'm gonna, you know, call Mr., I believe the next step is calling Mr. Stillwell back up for rebuttals, but I do want to say, I couldn't be prouder of my neighbors and how respectful both sides were. It truly does warm my heart. I was dreading this being my first time back after being on medical leave, and I couldn't be prouder, and you're an example, and I hope every other rezoning issue, that the neighbors remember how kind you were to one another, and thank you for that. And so, Mr. Stillwell, please be kind. He didn't hear me.
How about brief?
Oh.
Even better.
Even better. I'll take brief over kind any day. I'll take brief over kind any day.
So, um, in these public hearings, oftentimes, there's two types of things that readily resonate and come out. One is what's not said, okay? And you need to look at that. And then, then you need to look at what's said and take it in the sense of, was it a conclusion that's unsupported by the speaker's expertise? Or was it speculation? What if? Or is it conjecture? Again, what if? And here, we've got a lot of that, but I'm gonna clean up some things very, very quickly. First, there is discussion about pump-out stations and all of that. None of that is proposed in this project for very good reasons. It doesn't, it's not effective. At six thousand gallons per day, okay, you'd be pumping out every two days. That's not effective. It's not good practices. So there's no pump-out stations. Someone mentioned park models. There are no park models proposed in this site plan at all. They're prohibited. The, you do get the benefit of the approval of, you're not gonna have one additional house on that island that's gonna have a, its own septic tank at one thousand gallons per day. Now, a single-family residential septic tank on a pre-existing lot, which, pre-existing 1990, it has a foot setback of fifty feet of wetlands and mean high water lines versus the current standard of seventy-five feet. So these lots in Ozella, when they put their own septic tank on there, they setback less than other people in the county. That single-family residential subdivision, the, you know, where you open up the septic tank and pump out and repair it and all that, it's at a ten-year flood level. The drain field is at two years. Mrs. Katu has said that we can have, in her mind, three to four houses, but there are six lot of records. As I pointed out to you, the very last septic tank in Ozella for a single-family residential house of eighteen hundred square feet on an acre was one thousand and twenty gallons. Now, that tank is going to flood with the ten-year event. That tank is gonna flood with the twenty-five-year event. Since I've been in Citrus County forty-seven years, there's been one event that has been a hundred-year storm event, and that was the ninety-three event. The applicant has proposed to you that they will exceed that. Those single-family houses that are proposed or could be done in the alternative year, they're not gonna meet that standard. Your central sewer systems that you install, that you install in Chaz, Home Sasa, Crystal River, they flood on the twenty-five-year event. Your lift stations are flooding on the twenty-five-year event. Now, those lift stations have a lot more, one hell of a lot more untreated waste in them than this facility will have. But FDEP has allowed them to be built. Why? Because that event, that whatever's in that lift station or that single-family house, when it's being flooded with millions of gallons of water from a storm surge, really is a de minimis. Collectively, maybe not, but each, an individual one. Think about it. It's being diluted by a storm surge. One of the things that was not said here, what, where is the people from the Crystal River Preserve? They know about this application. They got notice. Their role is to protect that preserve. Where are they? They apparently are not concerned. They didn't bother to come. They could've even wrote a letter. They didn't even do that. So that's the rhetorical question. You have all these people saying, oh, the preserve needs to be protected because of undefined general speculative conjectures. But the very people who are charged with the duty to protect that preserve, who had notice of this hearing, didn't even bother to attend. And there's a reason why, because they understand professionally that the impacts are not as projected. Again, Ralph's comments, I couldn't disagree with a lot of them, but the fact of the matter is what he didn't say. He didn't refute that the RV parks in Home Sasa and Crystal River and other areas, eclectic areas of Citrus County, are compatible and have a history of being compatible.
Clark, will you get in front of the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's that jury trial stuff. Sorry. They cheat ya. What he didn't say, and what he didn't refute, was the planned policy that the legislature put in effect that this board adopted unanimously that says these type of projects are guaranteed mandatory. Give them priority. Nor did any public speaker reject that plan. And it's there. So tell me, if you deny this on compatibility basis, but you've got this planned policy that this piece is entitled to priority, how that equates? And the only way it equates is we're entitled to the protection of that planned policy and the public policy that was intended to implement it, to give people access to the coast and not have it denied by protectionism. And that's my term. Flood plain, you're gonna have street flooding out there, whatever you do. That's gonna happen. And the engineer's testimony was quite clear on that. The fact of the matter is flood plain has two real public policies. One, no high-intensity residential development in the flood plain because of hurricane evacuation issues. And the secondly, it sets all of the construction standards if you allow development to occur. And this project will compare with that. Now, these clamp round, what do you wanna call them? Bases, decks, lifted-up areas? They're the equivalent of when, if you have a house and you build a deck behind your house, that's the standard they're built to, and that's why they're not raised up. Okay? If I have a single-family house in the coastal high hazard area, and I wanna put in a deck behind my house, what do they say to you? You gotta have it elevated a certain amount so there's flow. And it has to be built to specific standards relative to, withstanding of flooding, wind load, et cetera. And that's how they're allowed, and that's why it's gonna occur. The testimony about the tents and how they're, how they are dealt with during a storm event, that man came a long way to testify about his product. And it was very good testimony, and it alleviated all the fears. The PDC, they talked about just other issues. They talked about all these RVs that are gonna stack up in the roadway in front of their houses. Well, the fact of the matter is, in Citrus County, we do an access management study. They tell you how many trips and how many turning movements you're gonna have. And when, when you do that, then the county engineer says, okay, you're gonna build one, two, three, or five stacking lanes. When I say length of the stacking lane of vehicle, it's either gonna be one, two, or three, four, five vehicles for a turn in. But the PDC thought they're all gonna be there at the same time and all gonna line up in the street. I'm quickly, there's been a lot of discussion about wetlands, but the fact of the matter is this particular project has no wetland impacts at all. And the staff report codifies that, and the maps codify that. The, uh, what you have here is an opportunity to set a standard. Everyone has said this is a good project. Okay, and they may not like the location. I heard that. But they said it was a good project. So you have an opportunity to set the standard here. And those PUD conditions that Mrs. Katu has in your backup meet and help you set that standard. But the applicant itself has gone beyond that and given you standards which will further protect the community. And those deal with hurricane evacuation, and they also deal with the septic tank issue. Single-family residential house doesn't have a licensed operator come and inspect it annually or ever. In this particular project, that tank is gonna be inspected. It's gonna be inspected once if you go by state regulations. And then what you, you have the authority to further define those inspections. And those inspections then are filed with Department of Health and DDS. If they indicate that the tank or the field is failing in any form or fashion, then corrective action is taken. The site is not pristine. The area to the west and north may be pristine, but again, the offsite impacts that have been alluded to are very speculative. A lot of conjecture. So we think we've met our burden. We've met the burden. The plan and the statute allows for that plan to be amended. And when it says you amend it, you meet the plan consistency test. Okay? And we've, we believe we meet that test. We've meet the PUD site plan standards. We meet the definition of central sewer. I remember people have gotten up here and said, well, central, there's no central sewer. You defined that test, and we meet that test, and the staff report confirms it. So, you know, and frankly, I heard the comments about my material, okay? That's not my material. That material comes from the Tampa Bay Regional Council study. I just plagiarized it. So if I'm wrong, they're wrong. On traffic, if I'm wrong, then the Institute of Traffic Engineers is wrong 'cause we just took those standards and reapplied them. And that's not competent substantial evidence. That's, that's the epitome of what isn't competent substantial evidence. It's been a long night. This has been a long application. Pre-app, January twenty-two, if you will. Two PDC hearings. A lot of information, a lot of new information you got tonight, but it's the same character. So we thank you. We believe we met our obligations here. We believe this is a good project, and we ask for your vote of approval. If you have any questions to me or the people presenting, I'll be glad to bring them up.
Board? Any questions?
Good.
To the applicant?
Thank you.
I, I have one.
Oh.
This is rebuttal. So he just said, do I have a question? So no.
Well, he, he can ask if you have any questions, but I mean, it's his opportunity to rebut.
It's, um, it's a ten-eleven. Cut me a break. Okay, so no questions.
You told me to hold you to the rules.
Never mind. You sit down now.
Thank you, ma'am.
I got chastised, so I'm not gonna say a word. You, you're right, I'm wrong. Okay, so, once the rebuttal is complete, and it was, thank you.
It is.
I'm going to close any further testimony or evidence. The commission and the commission alone may discuss amongst themselves the issue and take action. No formal party, county representative, or member of the public will be allowed to speak or add further comments. Okay, so at this time, I'm open to the commission for discussion and action, and Commissioner Bays asks, oh, Commissioner Carnard, asks to be recognized?
Yes. Thank you. Well, first of all, I will reiterate your comments in complimenting everybody. This has been a very, very divisive issue, particularly in your community, in my community, in my district. Regardless of the outcome here, and I don't know what the outcome is yet, any more than you do, I hope that the Ozello community will take time to, to heal and get to know your neighbors again. You've got a few wonderful places out there. I would start at the Island Outpost tomorrow, or PEX, or Backwater Fins. Anyway, it's time, it's time for healing in that, in that community. And on that, I am, I am going to make a motion that, based on competent and substantial evidence, that we approve CPA, AA, PUD-22-13 with the fourteen conditions outlined in the model ordinance, except for number eleven. The number eleven condition in there, I would actually like to see that read, that it's mandatory that they continue to keep the ADA loading ramp in place so that people such as the gentleman that got up here and spoke can continue to enjoy their boating and enjoy our local waters. That's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion by Commissioner Carnard and a second by Commissioner Bays. Board, any comments? Commissioner Davis?
I'm reading the conditions again.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I feel like Ken Cheek should be on speed dial right now. I'm sure he's gonna be really upset if we call him. I have a lot of questions about the septic tank and the mounded septic tank. You know, being new, but living on the water, you know, we have this desire to keep our waters pristine. I, I can't imagine how many millions of dollars the state has given us. I would guess at least fifty million, probably. A lot more when you talk about river restoration and septic-to-sewer projects. It sounds like the applicants are taking that into consideration and putting the septic tank very high. But I'm not a septic tank expert, and I would love to hear from one or if our staff has any information. A few thoughts that are going through my mind. Anytime I have spent with Dimitri and Jen has been a pleasure. I can't imagine two better people making a business. They are fantastic individuals. My only concern is, like some people had said with zoning, once they sell, once they move, once they pass, we, we have whatever. I believe they would go, they would hurt themselves financially to make sure. They would put the community above themselves. I really, truly believe that. But what happens when they're not there? So I wanna make sure that we get this right. And that's what I'm still trying to work out in my head. There's been some different talk about the gallons of, of septic. And when I'm done speaking, maybe Joanna can talk about that because I've heard there's gonna be one. It's six thousand something gallons. Someone else said it was ten thousand. Someone else said it would need two of them. So maybe we could get some clarification.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Unfortunately, at this phase, it's just the board discussion and decision.
Okay.
I have the same questions, but unfortunately, we're not able, Commissioner, I mean...
Madam Attorney.
Madam Attorney?
Thank you. I, I would just say, I, I understand that you all have questions. I would just remind you that it's the applicant's burden to bring forward good and sufficient evidence that they have met all the requirements of the code. And if you have questions, it would have been the applicant's burden of answering those questions for you.
So I'm not allowed to ask anybody any questions about this mounded septic tank?
No, ma'am.
Well, that's interesting.
Well, it's, it's, it's just, the evidence is closed. It's like you're in a trial, and when the, when the case, when both sides rest, it's up to the jury to decide the facts. And so if you are not comfortable that you have been provided all the facts you need, then someone didn't fulfill their burden. I'm sorry, that's just the, the way it is.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Finnegan does still have the floor. Continue, Commissioner.
Either way, whichever, you know, I, I'm, I'm still deliberating in my own mind. The reason why I wouldn't... The reason why I wouldn't agree with the motion as Commissioner Carnard presented it is that even Clark said applicants would add conditions of no condo-ing, roadworthy RVs, and the park closes on evacuation notice. And those were additions that are not, I don't believe are listed here, so. And I still have questions about flooding in the septic that I guess cannot be answered unless the four of you want to offer something. Thank you. Sir, can I say some... Oh, you want to answer that?
Let me go first because I was going to add to that. I've got additional conditions that I did not include in my motion that I will include. And that is that the septic is elevated to the 93 flood level, which exceeds the 100-year event. Also, that the project is prohibited regardless of ownership, that that project would be prohibited from condo-ing the campsites or the RV sites. That the RVs must be roadworthy, they can't be taking the tires off them, so forth. And the question about the septic tank, the DEP, Department of Health, those folks are going to have to approve the engineering on it. And they're not going to let anything fly that potentially could damage the local environment. So they're going to be eyes, I don't want to say, eyes of different experience, of greater experience in dealing with septic tank issues than what we have on staff looking at this thing before it's ever approved to move forward. So it's not, it's not just what they want to put there. It's going to have to pass muster with much higher state agencies before it's permitted.
Madam Chair?
I'd like to say one thing first. That's what I was going to say about the DEP, but it's a big concern for me. But what is even more concerning is the dilapidated septic tanks and sewage station or whatever those big things are that's sitting there now. DEP is going to, if you, if we decide as a board, this is a project worthy of it, they're going to have to deal with that. And I'm more concerned about that than a new state-of-the-art septic tank. And I didn't really hear anybody talk about that. That is very, very concerning. And so DEP would hold their feet to the fire with the highest standards to make sure both are met. Go ahead.
I don't know, to your point, if the old one is, has anything in it. So I think people are concerned about...
There's several out there.
You know, all of that, what Commissioner Carnard said about DEP is accurate and I would be the first person to say, yes, that's right, the state's looking after us. But that was my point and why I'm suffering so much as 7/11. Because the same thing happened with 7/11 and all of a sudden, I'm like, hey, look, here's all these great answers. And I went back to the community, my people and my Sasa, and said, here, here's what's going to happen with DEP, here's all the good things they're putting in place, it's going to be safe. And everybody went hair on fire and was like, that's not 100% and something could happen instead and human error and things fail and the Titanic example. And then we all, not you, Commissioner, because unfortunately you were out, gave direction and said, we want a land development code change. Hopefully, the attorney's working on that. So that we need to identify certain businesses and certain things in certain areas. I had to learn words like environmentally sensitive karst, that I didn't even know karst was a word before, but now I actually know what that is and how that affects our environment. So now we're going to change our code, hopefully coming very soon, so certain things can't be buried in the ground and these certain areas are protected. So I just want to be very careful in what we're doing in any environmentally sensitive area, whether DEP allows it or not, to make sure we're not stepping in the same hole that we just stepped in. I'm just a little sensitive to that because that was in my area and I probably, I'm sure you all heard about it, I probably heard about it a little bit more because that was in my district. So any, anything anyone wants to say about that would be great.
Commissioner Bays?
Commissioner Finnegan, I share your concerns. I mean, we talked a lot about flooding, we talked about septic, we talked about traffic, we talked about wetlands. I'm the first person that I will jump up and down and say, we, you know, we're looking, I am, I'm looking for the right development in this county. This is a tough one for me, I will tell you, but the reason that I feel compelled to go along with this is that I do believe that it checks all those boxes that we talked about. And we're going to have flooding no matter what. Everything out there in Ozillo is going to have a septic tank. Traffic is going to be the traffic and then we heard there's really no wetlands on this parcel. So for those reasons, I am going to support this. I think they've done a fantastic job and I think what you could, could end up with if we didn't move forward with this could be something that we really wouldn't want. We have a lot of growth and development coming into this county. And the one thing I am so impressed with, these people live here. I mean, they're putting an investment in here and they're part of the community. They're not taking their profits and running out the back door. And I think for me, that's a really important avenue that we go down because so many times we have these developers that are running in here. And somebody said it tonight, they said, the lady that came up, she said, I can't afford to live in Yankee Town anymore. Yankee Town? You're telling us we're cheap? We're not. I don't want to be cheap. I want us to be good. I want us to be good stewards of our land. I want us to be good stewards with the people that want to come here and make an investment and be a part of our community. So thank you for what you're doing. I know I'm not making some other people happy and I'm sorry for that too, but I think this is a good project.
Commissioner Davis?
I will echo the compliments to the crowd, all our model citizens, and we very much appreciate that. I have been torn about this from the beginning. I'm torn tonight. I think Ms. Whitehead said it the best, that this decision weighs very heavily on anyone who actually cares about this county. And I grew up here, I'm a water girl, grew up on the river, I'm a diver, very much into nature. We are the nature coast. And I take these decisions very seriously. And I want this to be the right decision 20 years from now, 30 years from now, as I'm hopefully finally retired here. I am going to support this. However, I would like to discuss another, one other thing as a condition. The Native Plant Society gentlemen, I know there is a difference between native plants and Florida-friendly. I can't ask any more questions, but I would certainly like there to be some sort of stipulation on what plants are used there. And I believe that that's something that you would agree with based on what you've been going through with trying to be, you know, ecologically responsible. This is a tough one, but I'm going to vote for it.
Commissioner Finnegan?
This is a tough one. You have some of the best people we could have here. That's going to do well for us. For me, it's all about the septic tank. And I feel like we have a choice. I think Dimitri and Jen could, if it was denied, make probably pretty good money and sell this property. And then I think, okay, we wouldn't have this big septic tank, but what would we have? So they could do okay. They could sell their property and walk away, no glamp ground, maybe some people would be happy. But then, when they're fine and they make all this money, we're going to have probably at least four more septic tanks, at least, not held to the standards that we're going to make them hold to. And that concerns me. So I'm at a pivot. You know, what's going to be the most environmentally sound decision, not for today, but for 20 years from now? Do we want them to be wealthy people that leave Citrus County and then leave us with four to six septic tanks that are probably going to rot in the ground and pollute our rivers in years? Or are we going to have one and support them? And it shall be checked, I believe it says, is quarterly in here? Under the, is it in our stipulations?
I had it written down, but we can put that in there. And there's, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
No, we need to talk this out because I think that's important.
I just want to be aligned.
They said that they were, they were, they were okay with doing the quarterly inspections. And also, before we finish up, I would also like to hear a condition regarding the plants from Commissioner Davis, how she would like to, like that to be read so that would be included in the conditions as well.
Well, it sounds like we're going to have to adjust your motion and Commissioner Bays is second, but we're all so concerned about the environment and we have two choices, Ozillo residents. We're going to have multiple septic tanks in that area that do not get checked and then are lower in the ground and held to a low standard. Or we're going to have one raised above the 100-year flood plain and it has to get checked quarterly and that's going to be of a higher standard. And for me, between those two decisions, that one's going to be the most environmentally conscious decision for today. But I do want it checked at least quarterly.
I haven't spoken yet.
Commissioner Finnegan? Thank you. Brilliant. Because that was a huge concern for me and I, in the past eight weeks going through this, I went around and round about, okay, we can have four to six septic tanks or we could have with no, no checkpoints at all, or we could have one good one. I was hoping that Ozillo would make it very clear what they wanted. And y'all made it hard. I was very concerned and in my homework, I had the nine homeowners that live right up toward the neighbors to this campground. And Ms. Whitehead completely, you know, respect Mrs. Whitehead, respect that she's been there for, since 1993, I believe. She was against it. The Sullivan family that really started, I think, in 87, but they said 2003, the next generation, they were in favor of it. Like, could you make it any more difficult? And nobody else came out, there was, like I said, there's nine and two came out and were against it. There, I was keeping track of who lived in the area. Eleven lived in the area that were for it and 11 lived in the area that were against it. So thank you for nothing. But it was, it has been so even and so it is now our job to make sure that if this commission approves it, that it is spelled out so clear. And my biggest concern also is the septic tank. And I appreciate where we're at and I think that we are all cognizant of protecting, most of us are Floridians, native-born Floridians, so we're very, we want to protect this area. And I'm, as a native Floridian from Sarasota, I saw developers come in and if they didn't like what a commission said, then they would get a new commission there because there's a lot of money and they would do whatever they darn well pleased. And this commission doesn't want that. We want to protect it to the hundredth power. And so that's where I would like to see what you all hash out as far as conditions and that we have it clear before I make my vote, so.
And Commissioner Davis is next.
Yeah, I was going to try to define what we were talking about with the additional conditions. I do want quarterly inspections. I think that would be really good. I completely concur with, I had the same thoughts in my mind, that having it to a higher elevation and inspected frequently beats multiple septic tanks that do not, that are on 10-year flood and two-year flood and no inspections. I would like to put a number to that. What year was the 93 flood to? Was it 110-year flood? Do we know that? We ought to throw a number on there knowing that we have sea level rise. Or is it more than 100-year?
It's a higher standard. 93 flood was greater than 100-year.
That's what I'm trying to say. Do we know if it was the 110 mark or...
You don't have a, it's 100 or 500.
I think it's 100 and that's, that's the gold standard.
Okay. So we're just going to go for greater than 100-year?
No, go for the, it'll be raised the elevation of the 93 flood.
Okay. Quarterly inspections and then I think I'm fine with just Florida-friendly with an emphasis on native. I think that that would actually help your marketing portion of it is to be Florida-native. And the rest of the conditions you already enumerated, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
We need to have definitive, objective standards. So can we pick Florida-friendly or native, but not best try to do? That's kind of hard to enforce. Sorry.
No, I said I'm fine with Florida-friendly. I was more conversing with them to the front row. I'm most concerned about herbicides and fertilizers there. That's the biggest issue.
We're good?
Florida-friendly is what I heard.
All right.
Board?
You going to summarize?
I think the motion needs to be amended and the second...
Okay, I'll amend it. Do you want me to read it off?
Yes, I do. I want to make sure that we have everything that you need, that you would like.
I don't have the application number in front of me. Do you want me to read that again?
CPA.
All right. My motion was to approve this application, including the 14 conditions outlined in the example of an ordinance. I don't recall the exact term.
Staff's proposed 14 conditions, except...
Except for number 11. Number 11 would be changed to require them to maintain the ADA loading platform so that folks, disabled folks can continue to enjoy their boating and fishing. It would also include that the septic tank be elevated to the 93 flood level. The septic system would be inspected quarterly. The park could never be condoed. The RVs must be made to, must be roadworthy. The park would be closed upon an evacuation order. I think that was all of them.
And the plants?
And the plants. Florida-friendly plants.
Can you read the, restate the road for me? What you said about the road?
The road.
The RVs must remain roadworthy.
Oh, thank you.
Thought you were gonna make me run through it all again.
Second.
It's almost eleven o'clock.
My second.
Can I reread that, Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, the initial motion, I have based on competent and substantial evidence to approve and direct the chair and clerk to execute the ordinance, CPA, A.A., PUD-2213, with the staff's proposed fourteen conditions, except for the condition eleven, to read mandatory to keep the ADA loading ramp in place. And then we're gonna add conditions of the septic tank to be elevated at higher flood level planes according to the nineteen ninety-three flood, with quarterly inspections of the septic tanks, park never to be condoed, RVs not roadworthy, and the use of Florida-friendly plants required.
I'm sorry.
RV must be roadworthy.
Remain road.
Must remain roadworthy. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
And I think Commissioner Kennard had said not only to keep, but maintain that ADA accessible dock. So keep and maintain. Thank you.
Are you good with that second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Now, at this point, do we need to ask Mr. Stillwell if he is okay with these conditions that have been amended?
You don't have to ask him, no, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so we, any other comments, commissioners? Okay, so we are at the part where, once a motion and second has been made, we do not open it back up to the public, and we have proceeded. There are no further commission comments. So I am going to call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Congratulations, it passes five-zero. At this point, it is now ten forty, and I am going...
Sorry, just one second.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Davis, no, no, they're fine. Commissioner Davis, I didn't know whether you had anything else.
No, no. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, it is ten...
We talked, we talked earlier. I didn't know whether you were gonna bring anything up.
No, no.
It is ten forty-one. Thank you for your patience. I am going to adjourn this meeting.